Kind of, it just doesn't seem quite as.
Good evening, I'd like to call this Wednesday, March 4th, 2020, regular meeting of the Scarborough Town Council to order. First is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is roll calling.
Counselor Gucci?
Here.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Gleistine?
Here.
Counselor Caterina?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Here.
Chairman Johnson?
Here.
Item number four is general public comments. Is there anybody in attendance tonight that would like to speak to anything not on the agenda? None? Item number five is approval of the minutes from the February 19th, 2020, regular town council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Item number six is adjustments to the agenda, and I believe we do have one adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose that we move order number 20-034, the request from the BOE to authorize impact fees for eight corners, that that be moved to the top of the agenda this evening.
And specifically under new business, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Any, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do I, do we vote on this? No? Well, let's vote on it. All those in favor? Item number seven is items to be signed, I have already done so before the meeting. Order number 20024, a 7:00 PM public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to the Chapter 311, the Town of Scarborough Schedule of Fees, and this is brought to us by the Fire Chief. Our chief is not in attendance.
We will be right along, but I think I can introduce this. This pertains to the changes to the fire alarm system ordinance, that's your next item on your agenda. So as a part of that new system, he's proposing a new set of fees. And that's for the different levels of monitoring that we offer our private residents.
Okay, and before we get into it, is there any members of the public that would like to speak? This is a public hearing as well as second reading? None? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
We discussed this in ordinance, we didn't get into the fees per se in the, you know, analyzing and doing fees or whatnot, but these are the costs that were brought forward. And I believe they've been brought forward to the, those people who would be affected by this change, so that it's nothing that's, that no one knows, let's put it that way. Shouldn't be any surprise.
Okay, great.
I had a question on the fees. So what part of the budget do they go to, or they, what account are they going to go to?
I believe they, they are shown as a fire, revenue of the fire department, they always have been, and so I am not proposing any change. Frankly, I have not looked at revenues as part of the proposed budget, but I expect that's what I'll see them.
To the Chair, I have a question for the Town Manager. When, those fees are spent, are they appropriated, or does the Town Manager have authorization to spend them on its own without going through the budget cycle of the council?
No, we refer to them as, as revenues, and so the commitment is a net number, so it's less non-proper tax fees, including something like this. Does that answer your question?
So the revenue, but when we actually spend the fees from the reserve account, is that something that you come to the council?
Yes.
For approval? Okay.
Very often, it may be included as part of a budget. But if not, I don't have any spending authority, council controls all of that.
And the ordinance doesn't grant that authority?
No.
Okay.
Certainly not.
So the question, and section, townwide, section, I can't, I cut and paste it, so it might have been four, and now it's six, I can't quite tell. It said municipal wireless radio mesh alarm system. The Town of Scarborough is transitioning from a legacy hardwired municipal fire alarm system to a modern wireless, et cetera, et cetera. So I was just curious as to, is there a reason why, and maybe someone on the ordinance committee can answer this, because sometimes it feels like, you know, our ordinance gets dated, and, you know, at some point, we're not transitioning anymore, we're transitioned. So I'm just curious as to why, you know, it wouldn't just say, you know, this is related to a wireless radio mesh alarm system, as opposed to kind of an explanation, which I could see outside of the ordinance, but the explanation that goes on, there's actually quite a bit of explanation around this. But it seems to kind of date the ordinance almost immediately as soon as we transition.
I think, just real quick, that is on order number 200217, which is the next one?
This, we're talking the fees.
Yeah, let's do the fees and.
Yep, sorry about that.
We'll hold that question for.
I've announced on the fees.
Yeah, okay. Any, anything else on the fees? No? Okay. With that, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Order number 20017 is a second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 607, the Town of Scarborough Alarm Systems Ordinance, to repeal Chapter 607A, the Town of Scarborough Fire Suppression and Detection Ordinance. This is brought to us by the Ordinance Committee, and Mr. Hall, do you want to tee this one up and then?
Oh, the Chief's here.
Oh, there he is.
Nothing like hit the ground running, Chief.
Good evening. This is a combination of two different ordinances that we've combined into one. It's been through the Ordinance Committee review process and came out of that committee unanimous to support the changes. It really involves some updates due to the new public safety building and a new municipal fire alarm system that we've installed to replace our old legacy copper wire system.
Any questions for the Chief? Why is up there? None?
Thank you.
Do I?
I had a question.
Sure.
Sorry, I was trying to find it. It's not a change, but the, the civil violations, I just wonder if you could explain that. That's, you know, just since we have you here, it's, it's from the section, new section, I guess it's 14, civil violations?
Yeah, the only change in that is the new language, it talks about each day a violation is allowed to continue after notice. To correct the violation should constitute a separate violation came from the ordinance that we've moved into this one to combine the two together.
Getting rid of? And does this happen very often? I mean.
I can't recall in my 19 years if it ever happened.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So that, to build on that, this would be a $300 fine each day that it's in violation, is that correct?
After notice if folks just don't take care of the problem.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, would this apply to anyone who's going to hook up to the system, or anyone who just gets a system, say, off of Amazon, or how does that, how does that work? I mean, it hasn't happened in 19 years, so.
Yeah, I honestly don't believe that it's an issue. I think it's as simply as it's stated, it has never been an issue whatsoever.
Anymore? Okay, with that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Counselor Gleistine, do you want to restate your question? On 20017, actually, this, I think this is for ordinance, not you, Chief, I think you're good, right? Yeah.
Right, so, I'm sorry, I cut it and paste it, and then it's kind of hard to find all the markups, but the question was that there's language in the, in the ordinance explaining that we're transitioning away, and so I'm just wondering why that's in the ordinance, as opposed to just sort of language introducing this, but then the ordinance itself didn't just address the, the change, you know, the system that we're, we're putting in.
Yeah, I, to be fair, I think, you know, that's some historical context that doesn't have any, any bearing, per se. By the same token, I'm not sure that it's harmful being there, but I think it really is there for historical purposes to appreciate what's happened in the system and why, why we're doing this now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any others?
Yeah, I think my quick comment is, Counselor Gleistine, I, I agree with you here. I mean, I don't know if this changes anything for me tonight, but I do think that this doesn't serve much purpose, so to speak, and this is a law on the book, so it doesn't necessarily need the two paragraphs of historical.
Right, it just, it just makes it dated right away.
Yep. Okay, with, any others? Okay, with that, all those in favor? Okay, next is order number 20018, second reading in the proposed, excuse me, on the proposed amendments to Chapter 303, the Scarborough Personnel Ordinance, and this is from Ordinance Committee and Human Resources.
I can just do a quick introduction, Liam Gallagher, HR Director's here, if you need further detail, but there are two, two changes coming forward, one dealing with how we calculate overtime and compensatory leave, and the other dealing with retirement. Mr. Gallagher's been before the Ordinance Committee on several occasions, and is available to speak the issue tonight if you wish.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gallagher? All right, thanks for popping in.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hamel?
Yes, I'd just like to add that there was a fair amount of checking on this ordinance, there was a lot of back and forth discussion, we got input from Mike Shaw, whose department would be impacted by these changes, and we confirmed for both of these changes that the, they would be beneficial, number one, it would be well received from a morale standpoint, number two, and number three, that their impact, their financial impact would be minimal. So, and thanks to Liam for, you know, for sussing that out and helping us to get a grasp on those items.
Anymore? Now, I'd just like to add, Mr. Gallagher, your memo was, made it very easy to understand, so I can appreciate it, because this is definitely not something that I'm familiar with, but your examples in here are right, so, thank you. With that, all those in favor? Okay, moving on to order number 20026, Act on the Names Posted to the Long Range Planning Committee by the Appointments and Negotiations Committee at the February 19th, 2020, Town Council Meeting. And this is brought to us from Appointments and Negotiations, so Mr. Hamel?
Yes, those are, as soon as I scroll up to them, this is the second reading. We tried to focus on staffing up the required committees, and that would be for the Long Range Planning Committee, reappointing Robin Saunders and Dave Merrill to full voting members with terms to expire in 2022.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Okay, moving on to new business. We're in, we're in, we're going to put order number 20034 at the top of the list. It is move for approval and request from the School Board, Scari, Scari, from the Scarborough Board of Education to authorize the use of school impact fees for the eight corners portable overage in the amount not to exceed $51,000. This is a request from the Board of Education. Ms. Bolton, do you want to give us a brief overview, or? Or not? It's either one?
At least this evening I have most of my voice.
Yeah, that's true.
The last time we got together to talk about this, I couldn't talk at all, so I'm halfway back. This is an item that was brought to the Town Council in a workshop with the board on the 12th of February, and had been discussed in finance committees for some time prior to that. The Town Council voted to provide $260,000 in school impact fees, reserve fees, in April of 2019, for what I would call an emergency purchase of two portable classrooms for eight-corner school. Since we put that project together rather quickly, it did run over budget, and so the School Board Finance Committee came to the Town Council Finance Committee and asked for additional funding to cover that overage. I know folks here have seen a lot of material on this, are there any specific questions that I can help with?
None? None, thank you. Are there any members of the public?
The cough drop's still here.
Before we start, are there any members of the public who would like to offer comment? None? Okay, is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second.
And some discussion?
To the Chair.
Yep.
So I feel like we need to catch the public up on some correspondence that we've had, and that's, I believe, resulting in a motion to amend this as it currently reads. So I've been doing a lot of research on this, because it doesn't make a lot of technical sense to me, not, and I get stuck on things when they don't make technical sense. So the first thing I looked at was, well, this looks like we're increasing the appropriation for schools, and we can't really do that because of, you know, we have the voters validate the budget. So the first point of order that I requested, or I sent through email to the Chair, was for clarification of, is this a violation of the Charter? And by reference state statute where we are not allowed to amend the school budget midterm without following a procedure that's described in statute. And we did get a response from the Town's Attorney on that, that I believe is in front of everybody. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it. So that was the first, I guess, point of order or clarification that I was looking for. The, the second one related to whether this was a valid use of the fees, and I felt like there was some relevant information lacking from the agenda packet that would allow councilors to make an informed decision. And that specifically was the, so you can only use impact fees, and I guess this is my interpretation, not necessarily the law, but the way I read it is you can only use impact fees for the purposes that they were collected under. And when I read our impact fee ordinance, it reads as referencing a document from 2001 that was submitted to the DOE, and that document was not included with the packet. So I felt like councilors should have the opportunity to review that material to make a decision. And to my pleasure, the Chair included in a bridge copy that I, after having looked at it, I think is probably going to be sufficient for discussion with our packet. So those are the, those are my parts of kind of what we were working, I guess, behind the scenes, probably the right way to say it, and, and I can see that there's an order in front of me to amend, or a motion to amend. I don't know if you want to jump into that or do more discussion.
Well, I guess, do you want to raise your, do you want to formally raise those, your points of order, and I want, I address them, or do you?
Sure, we can do that, or, okay.
I mean.
So let's, let's go to the first, it'd be good for us to figure out how to do a point of order right there, because I don't really know.
I just want the purpose.
So, you know, I'll raise my first point of order.
Okay, perfect.
And, well, I'll just restate it, I'm not going to read it, was that is this in compliance with our Charter and state statute, given that we participate in the budget referendum validation process? Because to me, it reads as an appropriation to the school department for the purpose of operating our schools. So I guess that's the first one. What do we do from here?
I think I'm going to respond to that one. Okay. And if I have this, just to make sure I have this right, I respond to it, and then we move forward unless the council wants to overrule my thoughts.
I think so.
Correct? So there's no debate on this, I make a call, and then if you want to.
There could be a motion and a second to overrule.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I'll, yeah, I'll say what I think is going on in plain English, and then I'll read the lawyer's opinion for the record, and so everybody can read along. So Counselor Gucci raised some very legitimate concerns. The Charter specifically says in a nutshell that the Board of Education is unable to increase the appropriation out of budget cycle. And if they want to do that, they have to have an emergency budget meeting, and then the appropriation, the extra appropriation is then discussed. And then that extra appropriation has to go back to the voters. And so the long and the short of it is, is the question is, is this violating the Charter? I'm going to tell you my interpretation of this legal opinion, and then I'll read it. I talked to Phil Saucier today, and pretty much the conclusion is, is this is actually a fund that is controlled, it's a revenue fund that's controlled by the Town and the Town Council. And so the BOE, or the Board of Education, would not be spending this money. We're, we're paying for these portals, so the Town is stepping in to say, we're not going to expand your appropriation by $51,000, but we're going to cut a check to whoever, whatever money you owe to whatever vendor it is for $51,000. That was my interpretation, so I'm going to read it. Quickly. As we discussed, under both state law 30 AM, AMRS, statute 4352A, and Town Ordinance, Chapter 1, 145, Chapter 2, the Town Council has the authority to both impose impact fees on certain development projects and expend those funds on authorized improvements. Any such impact fee revenues, even if designated for school infrastructure costs, are held by the municipality, in parentheses, segregated from the general fund revenues, and not by a school department. And the, and only the Town Council can authorize appropriations of those funds. Although not applicable in this instance, since the Town has a school department, the statute also makes it clear that a municipality can use impact fee funds for its proportional share of any anticipated school capital costs. Likewise, in the event a school department anticipates certain capital costs, includes those costs in their proposed budget, the Town can use the designated school impact fees funds for certain authorization costs to fund those expenditures. So with that, my response to the form of order is, I am willing to let this stand and go forward, because I, I have been satisfied with this opinion and the interpretation. So I will pause if somebody would like to challenge my interpretation? No?
I'll motion to challenge.
Yep, perfect.
Sure. But it would need to be seconded, I believe.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
And we're discussing it. Good? Okay?
Okay. So I guess my rationale is, I think it is a violation, and the attorney's interpretation is loose, I guess, is what I would say, and I think it would cover us, should we have, you know, a suit filed, which isn't going to happen in this case, but I don't want to go there. I, I feel like it sets precedent, we set a precedent last year, and it's probably unnecessary. If it was an emergency, like, my understanding from the materials that were provided was that there's room within the school budget to cover these fees by making some adjustments. So I don't feel like it's something that warrants this type of action from the council. So that's, that's my case.
Okay. Anymore to add to that? Counselor Hayes?
Well, just a question, when you said your information suggests there's room within their budget to meet the needs, can you clarify?
I'm going to ask Ms. Bolton to clarify. I believe it was included either on the Finance Committee packet that we had, or the one that we have here. There was an, there were alternative funding sources identified on the spreadsheet.
John, you're correct, there is a spreadsheet included in the packet, I'm looking for a page here.
Of the 168-page packet?
Yeah. Yes, and I don't have, I don't have page numbers, but there's, there's a spreadsheet included that shows that if the Town Council is unable or unwilling to provide the extra monies, that we will divert funds from other projects in our capital budget on the School Board side to cover this $50,000 cost. And we did identify two areas where the, the expenditures could legitimately be charged to, and we would simply be diverting those funds from the projects that they were originally intended to.
Do you anticipate expending those funds this fiscal year?
If we had them. Yeah. But we have decided that if we don't have the monies available, because we need them for eight corners, we've identified areas where we can save those monies and, and use them. I actually have it here, I just don't know how to reference it in the packet. Does that help?
It does.
Counselor Hayes?
This is a follow-up, so what, what would be the impact if you deferred those capital projects anyways?
The two areas which we identified were in security and access management and in district-wide plumbing.
District-wide what?
Plumbing.
Plumbing?
It's an exciting category, yeah.
Is there a crisis? I mean, is it heating and cooling type things, or?
Actually, no, it's, it's replacement of some toilets, to be precise. And some sinks. We have some failing toilets in one of the buildings, and we've been nibbling away at them in the operating budget, but wanted to do a wholesale replacement. them in the operating budget, but wanted to do a wholesale replacement. And the other pieces, custodial sinks, which are inadequate for our current uses, and were planned to be replaced. So those are obviously not going to change our world, but they were part of our normal maintenance and replacement and repair of equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to vote on my ruling, and a.
I think we vote on my overrule.
You're, I'm sorry, you're, yeah, yes.
Yes, motion to overrule, yeah.
Correct. So all those in favor of Mr. Kluchi's motion?
Can I, before we vote, can I just ask for, so.
Yep.
His motion is to overrule.
So.
Your interpretation.
Determination.
Correct, and I believe if I'm overruled, this gets struck from the agenda and we're done with it.
Right.
Because we determined that this is, this would be a violation of the Charter the way it's written.
And then that would, would go to Plan B, which would just.
Correct. Now, if, my understanding is if we want to talk about the funding source, we still have, if we want to discuss, do we want them to spend that money out of the two designated accounts, that can be a separate conversation in a few minutes as well.
Yeah. The other point of clarification is that this relates to the agenda item as it was originally presented to us, not as it will potentially be amended subsequently.
Yep.
I don't know if we could have sequenced this better, but this is how we.
Hey, that's, we're learning.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah, so, I mean, in front of you is a motion to amend this order, which is an attempt to address some of the concerns that I had, and the response from the attorney, I believe, relates to the amended order and not to the order as it was presented to us.
I think that's a fair, that's my understanding as well.
But if we vote for John's motion, we don't get to get to the amendment part?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Can, can we swap this? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, I don't think that's actually right. I mean, I think that if you support and overrule the Chair's ruling, interpretation, you still have to dispense with the matter, the matter's still before the Council, so you would either defeat it, pass it, or amend it. So I think amendments are still in play, should you wish to offer them, even should this survive.
My primary rationale for this was to be open about the order in front of us, so I'm fine if this moves forward and we just keep going.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I can withdraw, yeah.
Okay. Motion withdrawn.
So where are we now? Now we're.
Well, you had, you had two of them.
Can you go back to the dummy 101 version?
Yes, absolutely.
The English version of what we're doing?
In fact, we're back to dummy 101. So we're good.
Okay, I'm good with dummy 101, I'm good.
I don't want to cause myself some, but there was two points of order, are you letting the second one?
No, I'll raise the second one, and I did cover it before, but this one was that I felt like the agenda packet, as it was submitted to us, omitted some relevant information. Because the impact fees, the way I read it, are only to be used for the purposes that they were collected for. And our particular ordinance references a document that was submitted to the DOE in 2001, and that document was not included with the package. That was what I raised as a point of order, was I felt like the Council should have that information to be able to make an informed decision. And to my pleasure, it has been provided, it's in front of us now, so.
Okay.
You can rule on it, but I guess it's.
No, we're good.
I'm satisfied.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
All right, with that, we're back to the motion on the table, and is there any discussion on the motion on the table?
Which motion is on the table?
I will, yeah, I'll read it one more time.
Main motion.
Yeah, the main motion.
Main motion.
So move approval on the request from the Scarborough Board of Education to authorize the use of school impact fees for eight corners portable coverage in the amount not to exceed $51,000. I have a, I would like to make a motion to amend, and then I would move to amend order, and this is all in front of you, and there's one copy in the audience if anybody's interested. I'm going to move to amend Order 20034 to read as follows. Move approval on the request from the Scarborough Board of Education and authorize the Town Manager to use school impact fees for the eight-corner portable's overage in the amount not to exceed $51,000, consistent with the school impact fee ordinance and the projects contained in the application submitted to the Maine Department of Education dated July 26, 2001.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, and I'm going to, I'll lead the discussion to explain my motion, if that helps. So essentially, this amendment is to try to align, there's, try to align everything that we're talking about. So as I said before, I, I think there's a legitimate argument to be made that, that these are, we're not expanding the school's appropriation, we are using a revenue account and we have control over to cover $51,000. So what in this motion is to clearly state that this is us authorizing the Town Manager to spend the money and not the Board of Education. Secondly, it refers back to this document that is, is a very abridged version, and I think what we've all learned through those processes, we probably should update said document and ordinance, so that is some work for a different day. But in this, this was submitted in 2001 to the Maine Department of Education to justify why we're collecting impact fees. And projects that are listed, and I'm only using the first two pages, so I apologize, but right on the first page here, projects that are listed are, list schools to be renovated or replaced, Blue Point School, Eight Corner School, Pleasant Hill School. And then on the back, I've highlighted a couple of quick things that say, a short-term plan of modular units to meet immediate needs. That's not lost on me, because that was a 20-year-old document. In fall 2001, 16 modular classrooms, in addition to those existing, will be distributed through the six schools in the Scarborough School District. So I do not disagree with Counselor Kluchi's assertion that this, this is muddy at best, but this motion is an attempt to A, respect the Charter, and B, tie it back to this document, that our impact fees are married to this document. So that's what this motion is for, from my perspective, so. Discussion on the motion, on the amendment, excuse me.
Yes, I, democracy is messy, and this is proof of it. I think we, with this amended order, it moves it from, from very murky to some level of visibility, and I think that it provides clarity and sufficient justification for us to move forward and, and vote on this amendment and approve it.
Further discussion on the amendment, it's just the amendment. Counselor Catarina?
I certainly appreciate the work that Counselor Kluchi did in his, you know, digging deep and looking at the murkiness that wasn't immediately visible to me, because I was looking at it as, well, you know, it's impact fees, the Town, we technically own the buildings in the Town, so we were authorizing money to that effect. And I know that I've had some conversations with others regarding, you know, are these permanent buildings, are they temporary? But that's getting it, going down a whole different rabbit hole that you could do as far as this is capital improvements or not.
Right.
But that being said, I also don't want to be holding up the Board of Education's ability to serve the children in the schools in Town, so I think that this amendment makes perfect sense, and I like how Counselor Hamel says it gives us some level of, I guess you should have less murkiness, so I would agree with that.
Counselor Kluchi?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I, Paul called me after speaking to the Town's Attorney today and gave me an update, and I, this is pretty much what I said, that, you know, would basically make me comfortable. I was going to draft something, and then I'm like, I'm going to mess it up, because this stuff, you know, is threading a needle in so many different directions that I didn't want to be the one to introduce it. But I'm glad you did, and it reads, I think, reasonably to me, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's really important that you looked at the Charter, I commend you for that, that's really, really good. And I also agree with your hesitation on where you're coming from on this in relation to the Charter. It's one thing to go back to an ordinance, but to go all the way back to the Charter, because ultimately, it's the people's money, it's not our money, so those processes are there for a reason. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Although I do support the amended motion, I really appreciate that work.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, and this may come out wrong, I mean, I will echo everything that was said, totally appreciate your due diligence in doing it. I do have a concern, though, that, you know, this is our really second bite at this apple? I mean, we really approved $260,000 in the first round, and this is the type of work that we should have had at the very beginning of the process. I know we, I was going to share, we spent some time at the Finance Committee talking about this, and we're told less than a week ago that this document was just not available. So I think, you know, I think as we move through this stuff and complex issues, I don't think murkiness is good. So I think just for us, we just need to make sure we cross our i's and dot our t's, and I look at that as being staff work that needs to get done for us. I mean, it's great that you did it, but it was completely off my screen. I mean, I, it went right by me, so I now feel guilty that I didn't hold out my responsibility. But that, having said that, the other thing I'd like to say, which probably relates back to the main motion, what I'm also concerned about, if you just look at the past three events, we've had a pretty significant cost overrun in this project, we had a pretty significant, we approved a budget of 1.1 million for the turf field and was asked for 1.6, and we have a cost overrun on the public safety building. I just think as we're dealing with projects, we need to make sure that when we're approving them, that we have contracts in hands and firm commitments. These are three significant cost overruns that are impacting taxpayers and other things. So I hope this is just, we can learn and look forward, and for new capital projects coming in the budget process in front of us, that we're pretty comfortable, we know what the numbers are going to be. Because this is a second bite, we, this is not a good image that we keep going back the well saying, we don't have the numbers right. So I will approve this motion, I will approve the main motion, because I think we do need to move forward, but I hope we learn from this, that this is, we need to, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's.
Counselor Kluchi?
I just want to, we're on the.
We're just on the amendment.
Okay, so this is the final, final?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we're voting on the amendment, so all those in favor of the amendment. Okay? And now we're back to the main motion as amended. Is there any discussions on the whole enchilada here? Counselor Kluchi?
And I think this is the last point, and it's really fortunate that Jay's here. There is a second half of this project on our barn owners, and we're mixing items here, but from my perspective, it's important to determine what was built. And it doesn't meet any standard that I'm familiar with, so I can't tell if it's a temporary structure, which from my read of the Charter would not apply to the $400,000 limit, or if it's permanent. My instinct says it's temporary, but planning says differently, I was wondering if you could explain the detail.
So as I just said, I may ask Brian Longstaff, our zoning administrator, to weigh in, because this certainly, building code isn't necessarily my area of expertise, but in terms of looking at the zoning ordinance, I think the way we define a building in a structure really helps to start to inform part of the conversation, then we can move into the building code if that's the pleasure of the Council. So in our zoning ordinance, defines a building as a structure that has a roof supported by walls. And I'm paraphrasing, I don't have it before me, I wasn't really prepared to speak to this, but I know we emailed quite a bit, so I'm, and then, so right in the definition of building, we reference structure. In our zoning ordinance, we also have a definition of structure. Structure speaks to, again paraphrasing, anything affixed to the ground. And so these structures are determined to be affixed to the ground, both by the utilities that are, are brought to the, to the facilities, the fact that they are, there's tie-downs, there's sort of pins that are embedded in the asphalt that are tied. And so in, in sort of zoning vernacular, we look at these as buildings and structures. In terms of building code questions, I know you had questions about shouldn't buildings be on foundations or what have you, my understanding in talking with the zoning administrator and, and the, our commercial code officer, is that that's not necessarily a requirement of a structure that they be on foundations, and that we are satisfied that these are buildings. Now, they may be temporary or portable or modular or what have you, but in, in sort of the realm of our permitting processes, they're permanent structures.
I could not have explained that, so thank you, but that is consistent with what you had provided before.
I am for consistency.
Any more discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, Counselor Kluchi, I have actually a question for you. When did you, when did you finally get the report from 2001?
Two or three days ago, after a meeting, I guess Tom, Tom gave it to me. No, it wasn't finance, it was after a Communications Committee meeting on this week, it was Monday.
And you've asked for this, I think, several times.
I've asked for it several times, and I've asked for an opinion.
It's like the Ark of the Covenant, like no new or was, it was.
Right. I have also asked for an opinion from the school department, or the BOE, about whether this was an eligible project, because a response and the affirmative probably would have been enough for me. But the fact that I wasn't getting a clear response to that, kind of like, I don't know if this is a permanent improvement or not still, so it's kind of in its own world, which creates some concerns for me from a life safety perspective. Because the way construction works is you follow set procedures, and this one doesn't really match up with anything that's defined, is probably the best way that I could say it, so. But I did get it, and I did read it, and if it was a temporary structure, I can make the connection to this document.
Yep.
If it was an addition, so if it was connected, as had been presented to the Council last year, I can make the connection that it is a valid use of these, impact fees. But what it is, is a standalone structure or new addition, which I can't make the connection to this document.
Sure.
Because of that.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to comment on is, I kind of, I observed this more than was part of it, so as Chair, Counselor Kluchi CC'd me in on a lot of things, and I just, I can understand your frustration, where I feel like you very reasonably asked for certain piece of information consistently, and I, and I feel like this was, being able to read this, and this was not a knock on anybody in particular, I just, this, I feel like you felt like you might have been screaming down a well a few times, because all we wanted, all you wanted to do was look at that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, I appreciate your persistence, because this took persistence to actually get some clarity on it, you know.
Just to be fair, I could not find that document in our files, and so I obtained it on Monday and shared it as soon as I had it.
Yeah, yeah, that wasn't, that was not a Town Manager.
I will say Tom stepped in, you weren't the target of my request.
Yeah. Okay, with that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Six to one. Moving on. Order number 20027, excuse me, no, I am correct, 20027, move approval of the first reading and refer to the Planning Board the proposed amendments to the Town of Scarborough zoning map, and schedule the public hearing upon receipt of the Planning Board's recommendation. And this is brought to us from the Town Manager?
Yes, I'll introduce, I do see Jay Chase and Karen Martin here, who have been assisting me in running some neighborhood outreach on this project.
Thanks, guys.
If you'll allow me, I'll speak to both Orders 27 and 28 as they're, they're related. The first, Order Number 27, relates to a map, excuse me, a change to the zoning map, and this is essentially to align zone boundaries with property lines, which is a practice that we've been employing kind of town-wide, as methodically as we can. This is one of the final, if not the final holdout, if you will. I do recall a series of changes done at the Dunston area, and my only defense as to why this matter had not come before the Council earlier is that, with the exception of town-owned property, the existing public safety building, there really aren't any other affected property owners. And complacency is no excuse, but I think there was no urgency either, until most recently, when we marketed the property for sale in. when we marketed the property for sale, and actually subsequently now have the property for sale, and it's under contract. Not surprisingly, the, the sales contract we have in place does have a contingency, a number of them, including this clarification of the zone district boundary. As part of this, we have done some neighborhood outreach. I should back up. The matter has been taken through the Long Range Planning Commission Committee, which is the normal course of business, starting as early as last October, 2019, and kind of sputtered along through the fall, if you will, and has come back to life early in the new year, and here it is in front of us. Since the new year, we have done a couple of outreach efforts with the neighbors. Most recently, we had another meeting with them, and included the prospective buyer, the developer of the property, whom I think was helpful in putting a face with the name at the very least, and perhaps helping explain some of his vision for the future. And I'm quite certain that he intends to further engage in them as he refines his plans. So again, it's a long-winded introduction, but what's before you is to align the zone boundary with property lines. And it is not limited to this public safety building entirely, as that map will show. And I'll also try to get it up on the screen, make it up, you'll see it. So I'll stop there and certainly answer questions if you have them.
Any public comment before we proceed? No? Okay. Counselor Harris, do you have a question?
Yeah, I think we said we're going to take 27 and 28 together, so I was just curious about when we did do the public outreach, what was the nature of the comments? I, I'd heard that there were some concerns about, you know, what's going to be there, the height of the buildings, what are the property setbacks, what's traffic going to be like, what's the use? So I'm just curious about what were the concerns of, of the members that were there?
Yeah, I wasn't there, so Karen and Jay voted for, so I think I'll let them speak to it. I will say that we were not surprised that much of their questions had to do with what the future holds.
Right.
And we were not in a position to really speak to that. So this last meeting that involved the developer, I think, helped answer some of those questions. Jay, can you fill us in with how that went?
Sure. From, sort of, I think you touched on actually quite a bit of the main concerns, really about not only existing traffic within the neighborhood, but how additional development would further, potentially cause further issues with traffic. Certainly, density and scale of the development was a concern. You know, in terms of the rezoning, I think, you know, one of the things, the developer at the second meeting we had, as Tom mentioned, was able to really talk more about the location of the building that they're looking for. That's part of what will get reviewed through the Planning Board review process, but certainly, I think, the scale of the building, I think, were certainly some concerns we heard.
And what was that concern about the scale? Was it the height?
I think the height and the massing predominantly, and I know both Counselor Caterina and Glystine were at the meeting, so certainly, you know, I looked to them for their, their input on what their, their recollection was as well. But yeah, I think it was really, as I said, sort of the scale and massing of the, of the structure, particularly as it gets closer towards the existing single-family resident, residents, yeah, residents, which are sort of obviously behind the building, where Route 1's on the, on the force, the front side there.
Which would not be allowed under the current zoning, right?
Excuse me?
Which would not be allowed under the current zoning.
Not in the R4 section of the, of the, the R4-zoned portion of the property. So right now, the property's split-zoned, and so that's the...
And I guess a follow-up question. So to the town manager, when you said there were contingencies, what specifically was a representation in the, in the buy-sell agreement, and what is a contingency?
There are five different contingencies, but the one relevant to this issue, and I will quote directly from it, "Subject to the zoning of the parcel as a whole to the TVC zone," which is what is before you, is to move the zone line back to match the property line.
But nothing about the height of the buildings or other expectations about density or...
There, there's a, the other contingency, it's not an expectation, we wouldn't have put this in here but for the fact that it's allowed under the, under the zone, but it says, "Subject to a minimum of 25 units being allowed in the TVC zone, so long as the units are one-bedroom and less than 750 square feet." Again, that doesn't require any zone change, that's, that's the density that's allowed currently in the TVC.
Thank you.
Counselor Kluci?
So I just want, this one's complicated, not whether I support it or not, but, so we're talking about a particular development, but the zoning change, they can do whatever they want with the property afterwards, right? So to me, the contingency isn't really relevant to the zoning change, they can do whatever complies with the zoning. So the proposal that we have from the developer isn't necessarily what's going to happen to this lot. It probably will. But he could sell it, or, you know, circumstances can change, and the lot could be developed according to what's allowable in the zone. So I guess I, I'm trying to segregate, separate the two, that we should make sure this makes sense from a zoning perspective. It helps that we kind of understand what probably is going to go there.
Just to be clear, the developer wants the assurance, or has the expectation, wants the assurance, that the zone, the property that he's buying will be entirely zoned TVC, and is willing to live within the existing land use regulations there.
Before we go any further, should we put this on the table, if we're going to discuss it?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a question?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. And discussion, Counselor Glystine?
So I agree with you, John, you know, the what's in front of us is the zoning change. Well, there's more than one, but, so, but there was a question on the table about what happened at the meeting, and what the concerns were. And the, it was described as that it would be 25 units, and if I recall, I don't have it right in front of me, but there's, there's about 66 parking spaces there, we think, somewhere between 60 and 66. And so if there were 25 units, there was an estimate by folks that there would be 35, probably cars, that would be there permanently, and then a restaurant in the front. They were saying perhaps people would park in the public lot, or do something else. But there was a lot of discussion around the traffic and all of the extra cars that would be brought by this zoning change, regardless of what potentially ends up being there. And because it's a proposed residential, it impacts, you know, which goes back to the contract, but it impacts especially commutes, right? So a restaurant might not impact commutes as much, because people might be coming and going at different times of the day to a restaurant. But the, the actual, because the, the owner, should this be rezoned, is considering residential, there was a lot of concern about impacts to commuting and safety, et cetera. So I'm just answering that question about what a lot of the concern was. And then, in terms of the zoning itself, you know, I personally believe that leaving this as R4 definitely protects the, the residential neighborhood behind much better than rezoning it. You can see where it dips down right across the street from a couple of existing homes, and then it will back up next to a couple of homes. So I think the way that I would see this is that the zoning that's already there protects the neighborhoods that are there. And so that is, I think, what we want to consider, that's, that's a good, and I know that there's comprehensive plan considerations and things like that, but if you look at it, the buffer of the R4 right now protects the existing neighborhood better than the change to TVC.
Counselor Caterina?
Yeah, just a few comments. First of all, I've been on long-range planning for a while, and we've been talking for quite a time, along with, not just long-range planning, but with comprehensive plan, of making sure that our zoning aligns with property boundaries. So, you know, I think, counselors, okay, sure, you can, you can focus on this particular development with the public safety building, which I will address in a second, but if you notice, we're not changing, it's not just there, it's all the way down, to correct that deficiency, and it goes with the comprehensive plan. Secondly, on my little list here is the real estate contingency. Makes sense from a purely practical point of view. I can't imagine that you're going to get any buyer who's not going to ask you to make that parcel one-zone, and not split down the middle of the building. That makes absolutely no sense. So I, if I understood, I believe it was Mr. Hayes asked earlier something about the contingency, well, I can tell you that if the contingency's not met, that gives the buyer the ability to walk, to break the contract, with very little damage to themselves. That's, you know, we didn't do what we said we were going to do, so they're like, okay, we're all done. So I would hate to see us in a position where we're not going to have this money from the sale of this building, because we're going to, we need that to finish the payment, that was part of the deal with doing the public safety building. As for the buffering, R4 allows for way less buffering than between contingent, what you call contingent properties, than if you have the TVC. I don't remember the numbers, I'm looking at Jay, or Karen, could you speak to the buffering? So what's the buffering, if it's not changed, what's the buffering with the, with the change in the zoning?
Sure. So let's see. For, between just R4 properties, there's a 15-foot building setback, and that's all it says. Between a TVC zone and where it butts a residential zone, R4 in this case, the ordinance requires a 25-foot buffer, consistent with the buffering standards in our zoning ordinance, which the Planning Board applies through any site plan or subdivision review process. And so that often talks about it, there's existing vegetation, that that be maintained. If there isn't any existing vegetation, then there'd be some type of augmentation. So I've seen, we've seen different applications where the boards had some fence and landscaping might be the answer. And other, yeah, it, it varies, it's site, it's site-sensitive, site, context-sensitive, I guess I should say, so.
Thank you. If I could continue, Mr. Jay?
Sure.
In regards to the meeting, I did not make the first meeting, but I did make the second meeting. There were four, maybe five property, properties represented. There may have been more people there, but the houses represented, and they were, if I heard them correctly, they were pretty much immediate butters, or fairly immediate butters. And I did ask them about, well, right now, there's, there are shift changes with fire department and police, so there, there is that traffic at predictable times of day there, so I want people to, you know, keep that in mind. And I'm not saying there aren't traffic issues in that, in that particular area of town, that intersection is, is not the best intersection in the world. In fact, I think it's not graded one of the highest in the state, and again, I'm looking at Jay and Karen. That being said, I did talk to the developer after the meeting, and, you know, he's willing to, to look at and work with us in whichever, however possible, in order to, you know, alleviate traffic concerns. My impression of the people who showed up at the meeting were, were, they'd be how I would be, if I were an immediate a butter. They were, had concerns, and very, quite a few of them were legitimate, but I also feel that they are in a place where they don't have a visual to look at, there's not a specific plan hasn't been put before them, so naturally, people are afraid of the unknown. And it's that sense of change that I think they were reacting from, because there were a few, you know, questions placed, ideas thrown out, and they, at this moment, weren't particularly opening to listening to them. And again, that's my impression, that's my impression of what was going on. That being said, I, I, I think, I know, and I think this is an awesome use of this particular parcel, what's being brought forward. It's what we want in Scarborough. It's what we call work, in my business, we call workforce housing. It is small, you're not going to get people with five cars parking, maybe one car per unit, maybe. And I think it would be a good, a great addition to the town, and we can be creative with this, and look at what we can do with traffic, and that's why we have a Planning Board. So to bring us back to the original intent of all of this, is I would ask my fellow counselors not to look at just this, just as it's related to public safety billing, but it's related to the whole comprehensive plan, and outlining and making sure that our zoning lines line up the way they should, and that's with property boundaries. So that's it, that's my speech for tonight.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes, I'm not going to weigh in on the relative merits of the, the issues around the zoning changes, other than to say, I mean, we're talking about changing R4 zone to Town Village Center zone. I mean, our, the concept of an R4 zone, you know, even at this day, in, you know, the Oak Hill area is a little bit of a mystery, you know, how it survived this long. But one thing I do want to talk about, I'm quite sensitive to some of, I didn't attend either of the neighborhood meetings, but I am sensitive to concerns expressed by the, by the residents and butters, and the concerns that they have about the impact on their neighborhood, and, but I know there's a process for that, and there's a way to address and mitigate many of those issues, as Counselor Caterina has described. My concern with this is really a broader one, and it has to do with, I was at the first long-range planning committee meeting, as a, I'm the backup liaison to Counselor Caterina, and I was there when, when the committee was discussing these changes. And at no time was there any reference to a pending sale. You know, most of the discussion, most of the reasons that were given in that meeting for these zoning changes were kind of cleanup. And so that, that to me, back in October, you know, a month later, we saw the, you know, the, the proposed offer, you know, and voted on it as a council a month or two later. That bothers me, you know, that, that we should have been, someone should have been more transparent at that time, to indicate that there was in fact a, another issue that was driving how this came before the Long Range Planning Committee. Now, this is not a knock on the committee, they do great work, they're part of our process, and it fits in very well with what we asked them to do. They develop language, it goes into the, you know, into the Planning Board, and then through the process before it comes to this point now, before the council. But I, I think we just need to do a better job of being honest and transparent, and that could have helped all of us along the way, I think, as counselors, and I think it would also help the public to socialize it over a longer period of time. And I don't believe it would necessarily have put in jeopardy any pending, you know, sale, purchase and sale agreement. So that, that's kind of, it's a little bit out of left field, but that, I know, is a source of frustration, and is a source of, of trust, mistrust, you know, often on the part of, of the public.
Could I just respond to the timeline? I just want to be clear, this was heard in October of 19, 2019, by Long Range Planning. We didn't go under contract until the following month, so when it was initially brought forward, it was not known. Secondarily, I would simply submit that Long Range Planning, I'm interested in their unabashed, uninfluenced opinion about whether the zoning change makes sense, so I'm not sure. It was not purposely withheld. In fact, I, I could argue, I think successfully, that it's good for them to give their honest, open opinion regardless of any motivation.
And if I just may respond to that, this could be part of my own feeling of being the only dunce in the room who didn't know about it. Okay, so that's maybe my bad here, but I have a similar twinge when I hear the explanation of, we're really just trying to, you know, do a little cleanup here. You know, well, that, I, I think, is that really the reason? If there's another reason, let's talk about it and be transparent about it, and get it out there, and let's work it through the process. about it. And get it out there, and let's work it through the process.
Well, Councilor Johnson?
Do you have a comment on this? Could you blow that map back a little bit, and somebody just show me where Ward Street is in relationship to this building?
It's actually off this map. It would be the next one over.
It does connect, though? Does it connect?
No.
No, that's the issue.
Where Street's independent from.
You can't get to the light.
Can't get to the light?
Cannot get to the light.
You can get to Route One, though, is that correct?
Get to Route One, you can get to Black Point, but you have to turn left out of Black Point if you're going from this neighborhood.
Well, I mean, it's more of a general comment, because, you know, on Ward Street, Eastern Village is opening up Ward Street
Right.
as another access
Mm-hmm.
for the village, which is, going to have hundreds of units down there. And I was just wondering with the, I was with the initial public hearing on this, and the main concern was the traffic. And especially, we know we're going to close up those curb stops on Route One, so the entrance is probably going to be, what, down Fairfield and the road on the other side. What are we telling the folks when they express these concerns? What, what are we going to do about this traffic? Because this isn't the end of it. That's 24 units and maybe a small restaurant. But North Village is coming in with 86 more units. That's going to spill out into the same area, maybe not right down the same road, but all converging into Route One. What, is there a?
Sawyer.
I know we like to say, you know, the planning board will take care of it.
Right.
Jay, you're going to be busy. I just like to be able to tell the people something when they ask about this. What about the traffic?
The reality is, there's no simple solutions for Oak Hill intersection. We have studied it for 30 years, and there's, there's simply not sufficient real estate to move the extra lanes through that intersection. Twenty years ago or so, the council maybe took a definitive action. There was a proposal, I think as part of the Eastern Village initial conversation about funneling traffic coming up Black Point Road, kind of around Oak Hill, so-called jug handles. And the council took a very conscious action, decisive decision to say, no, we don't, we do not want to do that. We will continue to rely on the existing roadway systems. So.
Okay, but I, I think you can see the concern as the congestion up on Route One, which should be really in our decision-making about opening up Ward Street to come into Route One on top of this. So somewhere along the line of the process, whether it be through planning or site plan review, whatever, we, we should be able to say no sometimes. I should send in my comment. Thank you.
Councilor Gleystein?
Yeah, so I did, I want to address a couple of points about who attended the meetings. The, the notices to the neighbors went out in a 250-foot range notification for the neighbors' meeting. The, the planning board will send out 500-feet notifications. So that's going to get a larger group of residents notified. And I, I do appreciate that I use the term buffering, which I don't think is, was a good term to use, because by buffering, I was using a term that more meant, you know, if you're right next to an R4 on an, and an R4. But I meant in terms of what could, what the actual uses are for R4 versus what the uses will be for, for TVC. And, you know, I would like to say that I, I think this, it does, it does all, all come together because, in terms of us selling this property, because if we had made this change before, in terms of changing this to TVC, so that the whole thing was TVC, and then we got the disposition, you know, we started to sell the property, I think if we look at the policy about how we sell property by the town, there probably would have been a lot of other feedback into that, that process, based on even our own policy of who, who's going to look, who's going to be consulted, and the process of what we're going to do, all the way down to the fact that, you know, the, the policy itself says that we can put deed restrictions and covenants. So to Councilor Ken Johnson's points, you know, the only thing we can do about Route One is stop putting so many, so much new development right in that area in terms of, at least for the property we, as the town, sell, you know, once, once something is zoned. But we, we certainly could put contingencies in and things like that. We have, we have that right, deed restrictions, covenants. If we had even already rezoned this, I think the conversation would have been different when we went to even sell, sell the property. Because what, what is a good use for that, for that? So here we are at the rezoning instead, and I still just come back to what protects the, the neighborhoods there. And you can just see, it's quite an extensive neighborhood. It's a well-established neighborhood, is to not rezone this to TVC. It's to keep it R4.
Just if I could, I want to be clear on the, the history of this matter. The ad hoc police, police building committee, Councilor Hayes was on that in the early days. Among many things, they were charged and tasked with looking at potential reuses of that site. And we did follow the policy. I can provide you all the documentation. There was a conscious effort by the council at the time, at the conclusion of that evaluation, to not deed restrict and to maximize the sale value. And so we went through a simple conventional real estate listing, as opposed to an RFP process or some other process that potentially would have minimized the value, if you will. So your points well taken. I just want to be sure that the record's clear, that those points were considered and decided against.
Councilor Clucci?
Yeah, I, I mean, looking at the map, to me, it, it's intuitive. It makes a lot of sense. I want to understand what the planning board has to say about it and what the public obviously has to say about it. But it, on the surface, it, it looks like it makes sense. And I did just want to comment that we recently installed smart traffic lights at Dunston Corner. And some traffic committee meetings this summer, it was talked about that this might be a viable candidate. That might be something that helps to ease some of the traffic concerns as well. I just wanted to, that there are some options that can still be looked at, including closing the curb cuts on Route One.
Which, oh, I'm sorry. Could I just add one thing on that?
Yeah.
So one of the things the, the residents did say is they weren't as opposed to the, this building going more towards Route One. It, it's the part we're looking at rezoning. That's the part that they were not as in favor of. So they were saying, well, you know, if it goes out by Route One, where it's in the TVC. They were not as opposed to that. And I think the curb cuts are open to discussion still. That's, you know, the, right, yeah, the developer heard loud and clear that they weren't in favor of cutting out curb points because their concern is, especially with a restaurant, you're just going to be funneling all the traffic right down their two streets.
Right.
So that would be a huge concern. It came up with how we don't have enough parking for the None Such Brewery, how that went through the planning board process somehow, and we're, we're parking on 114. So they're very sensitive to, you know, that traffic will go down their streets, even if we say it's no parking. And if you do curb cuts, you know, you're making, making blocking for where are people going to come out? So, you know, that would still be open. And the developer made it clear he would be listening to that kind of input.
Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, I guess, you know, kind of building on the earlier conversation, but what this feels like to me, I'm somewhat uncomfortable that this is in front of us right now, and we don't seem to have a lot of answers. I mean, I think the answers of around, gee, what, what might be going in there? What's it going to look like? What are we going to do about traffic? I mean, I, I come down from Topsom every day to Scarborough. I'm down off, you know, Winix Neck Road. I usually come through there at 6:00. I came through there at 5:00 last night. It took me 10 minutes. I went through three cycles of traffic lights at Hennepin Drive, a couple cycles of traffic lights at Oak Hill, just to turn left. The traffic is an issue. And we have got Wex coming. We've got the Downs additional units coming. So I think, you know, and, and we can't give answers to that community, those residential areas. I just feel like this might be the right answer. It might make a lot of sense to do. I just think we're a little early in the process. I'm getting to feel like things are coming in front of us that aren't fully sort of vetted and baked and answered. So I'm sort of uncomfortable tonight moving forward this without going back to the community and answering some of the questions that we've just had as a group. So I, I won't be, I won't be supporting it tonight, but that's just one vote.
Councilor Catarina?
I would remind the council that this is first reading. It does have to go before the planning board. So I would encourage people to at least move it to the planning board and let them take a look at this and come back.
Any more?
Yeah, so I guess I'd build, I think Don hit it, Councilor Hammel hit it, said it best when he said it's a small miracle that this is still R4. I mean, if we can just look at the map, so to speak. I don't think there's a, I, I think what's going there will be great, and, but I don't think that there's going to be a whole lot of winners as it stands right now. It, that is a complex intersection and a huge source of frustration. And I think that we need to be mindful going forward that this, this, this is a, this puzzle is nowhere close to solved. However, with that being said, I will say that, I'm going to excuse Councilor Johnson and Gleystein for my comments, but we voted to go on a contract with this contingency. So we've been well aware of this since we voted to go on a contract. So I, there's some ownership there as a council that I think we need to start taking. And I, I think sometimes that we don't, and this isn't directed at, by the way, Peter, this is not directed, I know this might sound like it's directed at you, but it's not. I, I just, I need to reckon, I think it's important that we reconcile sometimes that we took an action, and here we are now as a result of that action. So to me, the best mindset we can be in is how are we going to make this work? Because we chose to go forward with this. I mean, this is a over a million-dollar transaction that is contingent on a lot of things. And we had a very clear piece of paper in front of us on possibilities and contingencies, and we, 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 we did it. And so I think we need to own it, and I don't think it's going to be pretty. I think that the residents have plenty to worry about with this. I, you know, I mean, this is, this is going to be difficult, but the best thing we can do is try to bring everybody together and see, see if we can get something that works for everybody. So.
Yep.
Just going to counter, I'm, I hear you, and I understand your point. I'm just saying, I think before we move on this, we could have done a little bit more of answering some of those questions. So
Yep.
you know, saying it's going to be bad is not exactly the great answer to the, to the community. So I'm only concerned about the timing and the process
Sure.
of where we are tonight.
Right.
I just think we need to, could have been a workshop issue.
I think it still might be. That's what, I mean, it just needs to get to the planning board somehow. So I, I, I think clearly it should be a workshop issue. I think we can, I can fully agree with you on that.
In fact, my fear is that the answers to the questions, we don't have. And I don't believe the developer's going to make much further investment until they know they can, the project's viable. So there's a bit of a catch-22. We would provide the answers if we had them. We simply don't.
Councilor Gleystein?
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to add, I mean, you're right. Ken and I were not on the council at that point. We'd been elected but not sworn in. So I can't speak to who knew what, but I know that night, which was November 6, there was an executive session to discuss this contract, and then it was brought forward with the second reading waived. So I, I see that as, yeah, there was a decision made, but sometimes, as you start looking at all the ramifications and have the zoning change right in front of you, then I think, you know, you don't necessarily have to go forward with, you know, a certain decision that led to other decisions. So I think it was, it was, it was, it was brought up. It was done through a long planning process in terms of, as Tom pointed out, which I'm well aware of, that the Public Safety Committee talked about selling the building. They didn't talk about what it would be sold for, but, but that it should be sold. And there was, there was mostly talk that it was probably going to be a restaurant. That was the most common talk, as I recall. There was one public comment during the public meetings to not sell the building. That was the only public comment I could find about that, to not sell the property. So I do think it was, it was, it was, it was done, done pretty quickly without a lot of public input. So that's just my comment.
Any more?
I mean, I just would put forward to anyone who is like, well, maybe we shouldn't do this. Maybe we should change our plans. Maybe we should, you know, if, if we don't do this, you're not going to have a contract here anymore. So you're not going to have 1.4 million dollars. I just want people to think about, so how are you going to raise that amount of money for public safety? That's my only comment at this point.
Well, there were eight offers.
That's all I asked.
All right, I'm going to take a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Five to two. Moving on, order number 20028, first reading, and refer to the planning board, the proposed amendments for Chapter 405, the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance. And I'll let Tom slash Jay.
Yes, I'm going to quickly pivot to Jay, but this is the companion piece. This actually, as Long Range took this matter up, they actually considered and thought it best to actually do a couple of slight modifications to the TVC zone. And so this is really a companion to the zone change, independent of, but coming to you at the same time. I'll let Jay talk to about the particulars.
Sure. Yeah, that's, thank you, Tom. As Tom just mentioned, essentially, when, when these type of items come before the Long Range Planning Committee, we like to open up not only the map, but look at the language in the ordinance as well and see what else is going on. And so really, as part of that process, there were three sort of main elements that sort of maybe jumped off the page or came up in discussion anyway, in terms of considerations in the zoning ordinance. We're now away from the map, and we're really talking about the language in the zoning ordinance. And so two of them are really focused on the TVC, and really, not only TVC, but how it coordinates with the TVC 2 and the TVC 3. And just sort of for a broader context, the TVC, the TVC is our Town Village Center. The TVC 2 and 3 are sort of transition zones that are, are designed to support the overall TVC. So with that, as a quick way of backdrop and background, one of the first elements that are being proposed for consideration is a discrepancy with how multi-building developments are considered in the TVCs, that'd be all, you know, TVC and 2 and 3. Essentially, what the TVC 2 and TVC 3 say is, when you have a multi-building development, and this is on one parcel, that the principal building needs to meet the setbacks to the, to the, the front yard setbacks. And I will say, in our TVC zones, we have a minimum front yard and a maximum front yard. So there's really sort of this band, if you will, that a building needs to at least sit in. And so, again, in the TVC 2 and 3, it says the principal building needs to sort of fit in that band. And then if there's multiple buildings, if the lot happens to be big enough, that those other buildings can be oriented elsewhere on the site, given all the other sort of site plan elements that the planning board reviews in terms of orientation and buffering and circulation and those sorts of things. In the TVC, the current language says that all buildings need to meet that front yard setback. That becomes tricky, depending on the characteristics of a lot. Sometimes lots have small, have narrow frontage and widen up outback, per se. And, you know, it just doesn't necessarily lend itself for sort of more flexible orientation and site design based on sort of all those other standards we had talked about. So the, the consideration is really to marry, to, to match what's happening in the TVC 2 and TVC 3 with what would be happening in the TVC for multi-building developments. The other item that was identified, looking at the permitted uses, there's, there's subtle differences, differences between the TVC and TVC 2 and 3. They're all mixed-use developments, all allow some forms of residential. The TVC doesn't allow single families, say. TVC 2 and 3 do, but not on certain street frontages. So, again, there's, they allow for multifamily developments in terms of residential. But then when you start to look at the mix, the commercial uses, largely, they sort of mimic each other in a lot of ways. But one of the things that was identified, then, the TVC 2 and TVC 3, again, sort of the support zones, we allow for hotels and motels. The TVC currently does not allow for hotels and motels. So we just thought that it may make sense to allow hotels and motels in what is otherwise the more intensive zone, the TVC, since we allow it in the TVC 2 and TVC 3. Then the third element, and this really touches sort of more, has more tentacles into the zoning ordinance, if you will. It's really how we treat and talk about building height in the zoning ordinance. And we really talk about building height in a couple of different ways. And so we really want to try to, and that's caused some confusion in the past. So we really want to try to codify how that's done and simplify. And as I said, there's really two that's done and simplify. And as I said, there's really two different categories we have here. One is our, our residential, our low to moderate density residential zones, the RFs, the R2, R3, R4, and the like, have in their space and bulk standards, this is where you talk about setbacks and building heights and those sorts of things, says for maximum building height, it refers you back to the performance standards in the, in the zoning ordinance. So, you have to flip some hundred pages back to come to one little sentence that says, "Build dwellings at 35 feet." Well, why did I have to flip back when I could have just said, "Building height of 35 feet?" So, the proposal is to simply do that. The other piece is in our more contemporary zones, and now we're talking about the TBC, TBC 2, 3, Higas Parkway, RH2, Crossroads Zones. We have a statement in some of those zones that says, "Okay, well, the maximum building height is either," and I, I think in your packet, I gave an example here, using the TBC 2 as the example, "three stories or 45 feet." And the word "or" is pretty important when it comes to zoning ordinance, because that means dealer's choice. So, someone could conceivably build a 50-story, 50-foot, three-story building, rather than just having it be a 45-foot building. So, that's caused some confusion. And so, the thought is, let's just say the maximum number of feet that are allowed and not sort of talk about stories or feet, and just go with feet. And, you know, in a lot of ways, the intensity of uses on a site are governed through our, you know, net residential density calculations, if we're talking about residential uses, or otherwise carrying capacity in terms of traffic, parking, stormwater, buffering, and all those other elements. So, as we looked at it, we thought that might be a way to just sort of alleviate any confusion or potential conflicts with what we might not have otherwise seen coming. Those are what I've got for you.
Any questions for Jay? Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, can you, can you maybe go back to the original rationale? Why was there a difference between TC and TC?
TBC, TBC 2.
TBC, I mean, clearly, there was that decision made on a rationale basis, if there were differences.
Yep. And it, it's really about the transition, where the TBC is really seen as being sort of the core and the more dense and intensive uses. And you'll notice, when you look at the TBC 2s and 3s, the intensity of uses and the size allowance for certain developments are sort of narrowed down, if you will. A good example would be in the TBC, we allow retail uses. But, or, TBC 3, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I added the 3 there, we allow retail uses, but only a maximum of 1,000 square feet. So, the TBC 3 is really intended to service principally the residences in and around that zone. Where the TBC 2 starts to get a little bigger, you can start to get into 5,000 square foot retail uses and other type of uses as well, but I'm using that as an example. So, the, the marketplace, if you will, gets a little bigger, and TBC zones are really intended to sort of be, you know, downtown, regional-type zoning.
So, why were the setbacks different originally? Why was hotels in one but not the other? I mean, there had to be some rationale for, or thought process.
Yeah, the hotel motel one, Karen and I can't quite figure out. So, don't, don't know the answer to that one. The, the setback piece, the multi-building setback piece, I was able to sort of go, so the TBC zone has been around for quite some time in our ordinance, actually dating back to the 90s, predates our 2006 Comprehensive Plan, which is when the TBC 2 and 3 came around. So, that language seems to have been integrated earlier and not necessarily, for whatever reason, wasn't reconsidered when TBC 2 and 3 were adopted. For whatever reason, I can't speak to what the rationale was at the time, but in looking at it now, it seems to make, made sense to the Long Range Planning Committee to look at complementing that in the TBC.
Just a follow-up question.
Yeah, sure.
And it really relates back to the prior, when I've heard mentioned three or four times tonight, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Which Comprehensive Plan are we referring to? Because the, the current one is, but it's about a year overdue. We haven't seen it. So, I'm assuming when we say it's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, we're talking about the existing one, which is, which is dated?
The, the 2006 Comprehensive Plan, that's right. It, we'll note, and as, you know, those who have sort of followed, the 2020 Comprehensive Plan that the Long Range Planning Committee's taking up hopefully Friday, and you'll be seeing very soon, really mimics land use from the 2006 in terms of where growth is identified to be directed towards. I think, you know, this update to the Comprehensive Plan has really been talked about, looking at sort of the systems that go into growth management in terms of how, how does traffic and affordable housing and natural resource preservation, and how do all these elements integrate where sort of past plans typically silo these type of things? This plan is aimed a little bit more at trying to look at a more holistic picture.
So, why wouldn't we wait for this, these changes, until we saw that Comprehensive Plan? I mean, you've probably seen parts of it, but are, is there anything in there that would inform about where, would it inform this decision?
I would think it would support the decision. The, the Comprehensive Plan doesn't give specific directives in terms of ordinance changes that are this sort of.
Density and use and.
Yep. And so, the, the 2020 Comprehensive Plan certainly talks about looking at intensifying uses in our growth areas. So, you know, I do think that these changes would be consistent with that 2020 plan as currently drafted. Of course, that needs to go through a process, but.
So, then specifically, as it relates to the public safety building, this would mean the height would change, if it got rezoned, it would change from 35 feet to 45 feet, right?
No.
I thought, I thought you said you were trying to move the TBC to 45 feet.
Nope, nope. So, so again, in the packet, it's the 35 feet, and we can look through it right now, the way it reads in the TBC. In the TBC, it says, the minimum, the maximum building height, this is where it says, "Three stories or 45 feet." This is where you could get into that scenario where someone could potentially build a 50-foot, three-story building. So, by going to just the 45 feet, so we're not changing the proposal that's before you, does not change any of the existing height in terms of feet. It, we're simply labeling it in terms of feet rather than specifying stories. And it gets to that terminology of "or," which, again, sort of leaves the window a bit open. I hope that helps.
But going from our, forward, if TBC does change it, right?
So, yeah, 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 yep.
Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I, a quick question. It's related to the, to the building height and stories language that was stricken. So, in the Higas Parkway District, we have some space and bulk standards. It used to be 75 feet high, not to exceed six stories, and then 45 feet, not to exceed three stories. Does that mean now you could build a 45, up to a 45-foot-high building, or up to a 75-foot building? Why is there need for, for, for both of those numbers now? Shouldn't it just be 75 feet?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, you know.
Yep, you'll, you'll have to excuse me. I'm going to grab the book.
Sorry. And while you're looking, it's just sort of a, can someone build a 45-foot building that had four stories? I mean, I don't know what standard heights are for.
Is that?
10 foot 7.
Is that possible?
A four-story.
Could build a four-story, 45-foot building. Yeah, wouldn't be pretty, but, anyway, that was the only question I had. Thanks. But I, I sat through the discussion of the height and stories at the Long Range Planning Committee, and I found it interesting, but I, I wasn't able to conclude the distinction.
And I can, to your question as to the, the 75 and 45, there's another column that fell off. And so, what the, under the maximum building height, it's non-residential and mixed uses are allowed at, up to 75. Residential uses are allowed up to 45. So, there's just a column that fell off. So, that's the difference there.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Counselor Glystine?
So, my question is similar along these lines. So, why, why weren't you proposing to, to leave the stories in, but then provided they do not exceed the height restrictions? So, that would, that would take care of it, right, as opposed to "or"? But if we wanted to say, "Okay, in this zone, we really don't want more than three stories," because that could lead to more density or whatever, we could take care of the "or" by saying, "Provided they do not exceed X feet in height," right? Which we have that language throughout the ordinance, throughout 405.
You said they don't exceed X feet, or you mean X stories?
Provided they don't. Nope. So, we stick with the stories, and then we say, so with, "Provided it does not exceed 45 feet," or "Provided it does not exceed." So, that way, we were kind of sticking with the spirit of what was originally in the ordinance and presumably was worked for quite some time by the, the people who worked it in the past in terms of stories. But we make sure that we've made it clear.
Yep. That could be one approach. I know when we talked with the Long Range Planning Committee, it was really about thinking about the intensity of use of, of a site, really being governed by the things I've sort of mentioned before, in terms of net residential density. That sort of tells you how many units are possible regardless of stories. And then, as well as, you know, future development being governed by the amount of parking that needs to be on-site, the stormwater, those type of things.
Right. And that applies to TBC as well?
All, all, all commercial and subdivision goes through that process.
Have all that, so they, yeah.
Counselor Johnson?
I have a question. Jay, I'm sorry. It sounded like there was a lot of change in there. Did we just, was that just one order?
Yeah, it does read like three. Yeah, yeah.
Can we come back to the setback part, which I think is a very loose part, where each building has a minimum setback of the roadway?
Yeah, so the way, the TV, the way the ordinance reads in a number of our more contemporary zones that really tried to create sort of a relationship between the building and the street, we have a minimum setback. So, it says, "A building must be set back at least, I'll just use 10 feet, but then a maximum setback of no more than 25 feet." So, you have this 15-foot-wide band. Now, the whole building doesn't need to be in there, but just sort of the front, that, that's where the building needs to start.
So, if you drive down Route 1 right here from the building, you'll see that consistent pattern with all businesses, right, from Dunkin' Donuts to the.
I don't know if Dunkin' Donuts, I guess I'd have to take a look typically.
Well, that's just an illustrative point. It seems like to me a pattern everybody's set, are set up. So, I was just wondering what's driving, because I think the change is to disallow that and have clusters of buildings not meeting that minimum setback or maximum setback. Is that correct?
Clusters of buildings. So, it's, again, this would be an example of a site, one site that has multiple buildings on it that provides a little more flexibility in terms of site design. Again, sometimes site characteristics, whether they have a narrow frontage, what, you know, any other natural characteristics, if there's some wetlands you're trying to work around, whatever the case may be. It provides a little more flexibility in terms of enabling the orientation of, of the other buildings to be situated on the site that might allow for better circulation through a site, potentially better buffering, better stormwater management design, parking layout, what, what have you.
Higher density also.
Excuse me?
Higher density, I would imagine.
Nope, nope. Doesn't, doesn't increase the density necessarily, but for potentially, I guess, in one regards that if, if the lot has narrow frontage and sort of has back area out back, say, they wouldn't be able to get multiple buildings. So, I guess in, in that way, it might govern density. But in terms of net residential density, the calculation would still be the same if we're talking residential. Commercial uses could still be, you know, they could just do potentially a bigger building out front, so.
How did the setback one come to you, or come, how did that get brought forward?
It was just part of, part of the due diligence and looking at the ordinance and sort of seeing what's happening out there and what the differences are. So, I, I guess there isn't a specific targeted, uh-huh, if you know what I mean. It's just working with the ordinance for years. And there's things that you sort of identify and say, "Oh, let's put a flag next to that one." And, "Oh, hey, we're talking about this. Let's see how that incorporates."
Because I was listening to a Bass Planning Board meeting, so I'm going out on a limb here to make myself look like an idiot. But when the Downs was bringing forward Phase 2, there was discussion about setbacks in terms of the garage from the road. Can you explain that at all, or?
This wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Wouldn't have anything to do with that, so.
I'd be happy to talk with you about that, but I don't feel like I have, yeah. This, this would not impact that. This is only for, just keep in mind, this would only be a change in the TBC to mimic what's happening in the TBC 2 and TBC 3. It's not about other zones.
Jake, I have a question to, actually, I'm going to piggyback on, like, Counselor Glystine's might look like an idiot, because I have the same type of question. So, if we look at, you took an example of TBC 2 as the, going back to the logical and versus the logical or, because right now you have a logical or. Counselor Glystine suggested, why isn't there a logical and?
Just an and.
Yeah, correct. And so, I'm going to address something that I think might be in people's heads. When we look at something like the public safety building, we're looking at compact living spaces. Is, is that, is, is something like that, right, workforce housing that I believe is smaller? All right, does height play into, into, how much does height play into that one? So, I guess my, I, back to the question of, can we get four stories of that type of housing in 45 feet? Because I guess what we're all the back of our head, I'm just going to say it, is I think that we're worried that, okay, is this going to allow a 20-unit building and, okay, turn it into a 35-unit building? Okay. Can you address that?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, all right.
Net, and, and I've, I've used the term, and I'm sorry, I haven't really articulated what the term is, because I live it and I understand others don't, right? So, the, the term is net residential density. Essentially, what that is, is every property that has, that residential uses are allowed on, and that could be in our, you know, just residential zones or our mixed-use zones. Every property, every zone talks about how much density per acre is allowed. So, if you're allowed four units per acre, say, what a developer does when they come to the planning board is they do their net residential calculation. So, they take their gross area of lot area, their survey goes out and does their thing. Then, there's certain elements that have to be subtracted out to get to their net residential area. You know, we're talking typically wetlands, any rights-of-way, any existing stormwater facilities, these sorts of things. And there's, and there's also just a baseline, 10% is taken off for infrastructure considerations. That gets them to, from their gross, you subtract out, you're now down to your net residential area. And based on, then you take your, your density allowance, if it's four units per acre, say, you then say, "Okay, four times whatever I have left is my density." So, whatever density is allowed, again, let's use the public safety building, if it were all TBC-zoned, whatever number of units are allowed there would be allowed there sort of regardless if it was a maximum of one story or maximum of eight stories. You could only get so many units on the lot.
That was, thank you. That was, thank you. Yes.
Similar question. If you have parking on the first floor and then three stories, would that be considered a three-story or a four-story?
The, that would be considered four stories, I believe, because you start the.
I don't have my books.
But you start, you start the.
Not that important, but.
Yeah.
I was trying to draw it correctly, maybe, see if they're really more similar than I think we were anticipating.
Any more for Jay? Counselor Catarina?
Actually, this isn't for Jay.
All right.
Just a reminder, this is the first reading as part of planning.
Well, any more for Jay? Wait, wait for Jay.
I just have one question, maybe to help clarify. Jay, is it fair to characterize that the setback set of changes you're proposing in the height are things that you have dealt with through the years and have been question marks that, you said, put a flag in it, that when we have a chance, we ought to clarify these things? Is that fair?
Yep.
Whereas with the hotel motel, is that here before us because of any particular request from the developer?
Yep, that was actually one that, you know, Karen identified. No, that was actually one that Karen identified, as we were doing our process getting ready for long-range planning. She said, hey, look at this, isn't that funny? I said, huh, that is kind of funny. Let's talk to the long-range planning committee and see what they think.
So I was just trying to characterize kind of the nature of these changes and how they find themselves before you.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
Is there a motion on the table?
Uh-oh.
Second.
Discussion? Councilor Glystine?
Yeah, these are very tough. You know, I'd like to make a pitch that long-range planning should be recorded, so that you can go back and understand a lot of what's being discussed and driven through that particular committee, because it's clearly very important. And, you know, it's interesting that TBC Two and TBC Three are offering hotels, because TBC, with the way Jake, they quoted it to us, you know, the use for TBC, you know, it clearly says it's for resident, intended for, intended for residents, you know, it's intended to be for residents of the immediate region. And hotels, you know, are not really for residents for the immediate reason, region, I guess, although unless you put your family in a hotel, because you can't, you can't stand them staying with you, or you don't have enough room at your house, because you live in a workforce housing. So, anyway, the, you know, I'm comfortable without hotels being in TBC, based on what we say the use is TBC. Again, this is very difficult for me, because this is so much, and clearly, there's just hours of long-range planning committee that I would listen to a lot of the meetings if we had them, because a lot of the discussion is in those.
Councilor Clucci?
So I feel like sometimes we try to be so specific with what's, with our zoning, that we really make it difficult for something creative to come or happen around us. And it's not easy to, I mean, these details, they drive me nuts. We can't even answer what a three-story building is, without having to refer to a five-hundred-page manual. So somebody trying to do something with their property, it's difficult, it's confusing. You need five experts to figure it out. So I guess that's, I just wanted to point out, that's kind of generally where I am with zoning, so I don't have a problem with any of these changes. I want people to come to town and try to do cool stuff with their properties, and let's make reasonable decisions about whether we want that here or not, so.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would echo is, my understanding is some of this is from long-range planning, some of it's from staff, but I, I'd just echo, I think, especially when you're new to the council, long-range planning committee seems to be something that's over there, and we're not engaged with it, and they do do a lot of work, so anything we can do, and I, obviously, I know that we have liaisons to it, but it does seem like sometimes a mystery body to us, and that's on us, I think, sometimes, but I think we could all work together to see if we, there's a way we can have more exposure to what they're talking about, because it would certainly help us, so.
Yeah, I guess where I am, and it sort of echoes of the previous one, I'm just somewhat uncomfortable with the volume of these couple of changes in front of us, the timing of them. Really, I think there's a growing sentiment, at least what I'm hearing is, you know, do we have a plan for growth, and what is happening with growth, and the pace of growth? And are we really thinking about how growth is going to impact, as we have just said, if we can't fix, okay. And so it feels like we're approaching these things kind of piecemeal, and not necessarily in a comprehensive strategic way. I mean, we've invested a ton of money in a new comprehensive plan, and here we are making changes before, at least we have seen the comprehensive plan. I would be much more comfortable with these things being in front of us in sort of a sequenced orally way, once we have that. So I'm, I don't see a pressing need. It doesn't sound like there's any pressure from any development right in front of us, because you just answered, there isn't. So I'm uncomfortable doing this, in this process. I would rather slow this down, I'd rather work on the growth organs, get a better field to answer some of the questions here. What do we want in this town? Where do we want it? And what do we want it to look like? So I'm going to vote no. I'm not sure, I don't think we're ready for prime time yet on this, so that's just where I am.
Okay. With that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Four-three. And I am going to take a brief recess, we'll reconvene at eight fifty-seven. Five minutes.
Okay, we are back in session. We are on order number 20029. First reading and refer to the planning board, the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the Town of Scarborough Zoning Ordinance, Section 7 HB Historic Preservation.
Jay again?
Oh, hey Jay.
You're the man.
Good to see you show up.
At the risk of wearing out my welcome. Let's see, so this is actually coming to you by way of the Historic Preservation Committee. So I guess I have the lucky instance to present it to you. So the Historic Preservation Implementation Committee, actually, started looking at, a number of years ago, the town adopted our Historic Preservation Ordinance or component to our zoning ordinance that listed, I believe it's 48 properties. The Implementation Committee has gone back and taken a second look at that list and identified a number of, sort of really three categories of changes that they would like the council to consider. The first are three are really just around address changes, sort of areas that were labeled, mislabeled, either through their address or their map and lot. Then there are four other properties that are actually proposed to be removed from the list, either for different reasons. One can't really be found, one the structure has been completely altered and has no historic value any longer. Actually, I think that might be two of them. Other one's just a misidentified property. And then there are two new additions, and these are along the Honeywell Road. These are sort of known as Honeywell Houses. And so those are proposed to be added to the list. About 10 months ago or so, I helped the Historic Preservation Commission put together a mailing to all the impacted properties to let them know of the proposed changes. I believe a few of those folks did have opportunity to come meet with the Historic Preservation Committee. I go to their meetings occasionally when requested. I wasn't there for those meetings, but it sounded like particularly the two that are being added, I think, you know, have been part of those conversations. And I think that's probably where the most significant impact is. I will, I should, again, just by way of background, again, knowing that you all aren't reading every single page of the zoning ordinance every single day. The Historic Preservation Provision of our ordinance is really an incentive-based provision. It enables folks who have these properties to potentially do things with their property. It incentivizes maintaining the historic nature of the property. It provides for potential density bonuses in some instances if there's other development capacity on the lot. And the other thing it does, it allows for some relief from current building codes. And this is sort of laid out in sort of state language, so that you can maintain the overall character of the property, of the structure, I should say. So again, as I said, it's an incentive-laden program, and I guess I'll leave it at that for now.
Any questions for Jay? Counselor Catarina?
This isn't a question. I just want to, I'm the representative to Historic Preservation liaison, I should say. And yeah, they've been doing a lot of work on this to clean this up. They've been, Jessica Holbrook, who was former Chair of the Town Council, really, she's been to every property, tracked them down, looked up, found out what was going on. As regards the ones to be added, the owners did come to a meeting and they were very excited about being added to the list. And just for, so the public knows, being on this list, as Jay indicated, is helpful to owners. I know people sometimes see historic designation, they think, oh no, like Portland, I have to get permission before I change windows, or do this, or do that. It's not like that at all. It's more, it is an incentive to try to help people to maintain some of the exterior architecture, I can't even talk, architectural character or whatnot to these buildings, so.
Counselor Clucci?
That sort of answers my question. I was curious about the ones coming off the list, if there's a reason, maybe the incentives didn't make sense to them. So I was just wondering if there was an opportunity there, that something that was historic in age or could have been possibly preserved.
Yeah, and I think that's what we have, just again, for council's knowledge, what we have in our system is a check, if you will, on the properties that are on the list. And so that when a property owner comes forward and puts in a permit, we take a moment to pause and just say, do you know, are you aware that your property's on this list? And here's what, here's what that means, that you have in a, you know, one of the few properties in town that have historic value, and here's some things that you might be able to do to preserve that historic character of the property. So I don't think I answered your question, maybe.
Any more questions for Jay? All right, Jay, see you in a couple seconds.
Yes, you will.
Is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
What about public comment?
No, I'm sorry. Is there public comment? I'm sorry. Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, moving on to order number 20030. First reading and refer to the planning board, the proposed amendments to Chapter 405C, the Scarborough, excuse me, the Town of Scarborough Shoreline Ordinance.
That's Brian.
Give Jay a little break.
My mistake. Sorry.
He's done a good job, but I'll give him a little break. So this is, I don't know how much you all know about our shoreline zoning and why we have it and everything, so I'll just give you the real quick elevator speech and then hopefully my memo outlines some of the changes. And then I really, due to the lateness of the hour, prefer that you ask me questions that you have them, rather than just have me talk at you. But we do have a mandatory shoreline zoning act in the state of Maine, so all municipalities have to adopt an ordinance that is consistent with the state guidelines. Periodically, the state updates their guidelines, and towns are obligated to update their ordinance accordingly. The last set of guidelines was developed in 2015. A handful of communities have adopted them. I think several more communities have not. We were told probably a year and a half ago that the Attorney General's Office would soon be sending out nasty letters to communities, telling them that you need to update your ordinance to get it consistent with our guidelines. So in anticipation of that, I started crafting our ordinance and in the amendments to make it consistent with that. The guidelines that, from 2015, have some good things in it. They also have some things I don't particularly like, but we are still obligated to be no less restrictive, no less restrictive than the state guidelines. We can be more restrictive if we want to. We can't be any less. So what you have in front of you is our draft amendments that incorporate the major changes, the major things in that ordinance, and really, I think, the things that are going to be most important, most controversial perhaps, or have the most comment on, are the sections dealing, I think it starts with 12C, that deals with non-conforming structures. That's the big one. The non-conforming structures are structures that are within 75 feet of the high water line, or the highest annual tide, or the upland edge of the wetland. And we have a lot of those types of structures along Shipwreck Road in Higgins Beach. We have some in Pine Point, not as many, and a few, very few, at Proust's Neck, and a few scattered in other places. And so that's my elevator pitch, and I'd like to know if there's anything I can answer or clarify for you folks.
Counselor Clucci?
Would adopting this impact any current projects or something coming through the pipeline, or is there like a separation period?
Oh, I see what you mean. So if we've already permitted something, but it hasn't been built yet, and there's a six-month window in which they need to start, if we were to adopt this in that six-month period, it would not impact those projects that we have already permitted. It would only impact those projects that would come online after this ordinance was enacted.
Is there any benefit, if there's somebody that's thinking about doing something, or in the start, you know, the early process right now? Like, when does this take effect after? Is it immediate, or within a month, or something like that? I'm wondering if there's an opportunity or a benefit to creating a larger window. Where we approve it, and it might take effect in six months.
That's actually a great question. I'm not 100% certain myself exactly when the council, if the council approves this, I'm not exactly sure when that would go into effect.
By your own rules, or does this become effective, I believe 12 o'clock midnight the next day, unless otherwise specified? So you are able to create a different effective date?
Yeah. So much marijuana. Counselor Hamel?
We had the good fortune of sitting through this with thorough review from Brian and the ordinance committee, Jay Marie and Ken and I. So I want to thank you for that. But I did have a couple follow-up questions. One was, and I know you answered it before, but I think it'd be good for the benefit of the council to hear it. Does this apply to commercial and residential structures, the changes?
Yes.
And is there any pending development or, you know, project that's driving these changes?
There's no specific one project that's driving these changes. Again, I started this process about a year and a half ago. Takes a while in our busy town to get the time to insert all of this verbiage into the ordinance and make it make sense. I'm not sure I'm there yet, but I'm hoping that it is. One thing that did come up as part of this, and prompted us to say, you know, we probably ought to get on this, and I don't want to throw this out because there's nothing in the works with it, but you all know where Cliff's Antiques store was on US Route 1. There's a part of our existing ordinance that we always thought, it has to do with the Stream Protection District, we always thought it was an overlay district. But in examining our ordinance, and with legal counsel's interpretation as well, we realized that it doesn't work that way, the way it's written. We thought it did. We thought it was an overlay district, which would allow Cliff's Antiques, being a commercial building, to be redeveloped or reused for commercial uses. But in effect, the way our ordinance is currently written, it would prohibit that building from being used as a commercial building once the use has ceased for 12 months, which it has, because it's been on the market for that long. And so we, what we intended, what we thought we had intended was to allow the underlying zones' uses to be allowed, and just the setbacks from the resource, from the stream, or from the high water line, and those types of issues, as well as possibly impervious surface or non-vegetated surface limitations, and those kinds of things, the environmental stuff, could still, would still trump our existing ordinance, but the uses would still be allowed. So one of the changes that we've had in there is to correct that and make that an overlay zone. And you'll notice if you go down through the different zones, the only zone in the shoreline ordinance that stays a zone or a district of its own is the Resource Protection District, where there is very little development to begin with, by design.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, I think you referenced Shipwreck, that they'll be, how would they, will they be financially impacted? What are the implications on?
Shipwreck Road is impacted by so many regulations now. You have sand dune regulations, you have flood plain ordinance regulations, you have piping plover regulations. There are just all kinds of layers of regulation there. The major, the major difference, one of the major differences in the proposed amendments, currently, if you have an older cottage on Shipwreck Road, I'll just use that as an example, and you wish to tear that cottage down and rebuild that cottage, or rebuild a cottage, maybe bigger, everybody wants to build bigger, you cannot do that voluntarily without going to the Zoning Board of Appeals and applying for a variance. The only variance you can apply for is a hard, standard hardship variance, which says you have no reasonable return from that property unless you get a variance. Very difficult to prove, very difficult to get. The state's regulations don't require that. They only require that you move that cottage back to the greatest practical extent, or the setback whichever comes first. That determination is currently done by the planning board. Another change in the ordinance is that we would put that on the zoning board to decide. You wouldn't be going for a variance, you would simply be going for a determination if you located that, proposed to locate that structure back to the greatest practical extent. Most of those cottages can't move because of other regulations and because of setbacks to the street. So that's where the zoning board makes that determination. So that's just an example. That's one of the changes. The other change is that if you've ever dealt with shoreline zoning, we currently have, allow non-conforming structures to expand by 30% area and volume. Volume is everything between the roof and the walls and the ground. Area is the number of living, the area of the living space floors between the walls. The volume calculation gets very difficult when the shoreline zone line cuts through your house diagonally, and perhaps through the ridge of your roof diagonally. Very difficult to track, very difficult to calculate. The current, the proposed amendments would take away that 30% volume calculation, and they put a cap on the height of the structure. That's the part that may be controversial. There'll be winners and losers. I heard somebody say that earlier. There's going to be winners and losers with this, just the way there is now. It's just going to be done in a different way.
Counselor Icese?
I had a question on that reconstruction or replacement. It says that if damage or destroyed by more than 50% of market value, how is, how is that going to be determined? Just the market value at the time? And was it in other places? Is it sometimes 50% of the physical, like, volume or whatever, like you were describing?
Well, again, we're mirroring, mirroring the state's guidelines. That's the exact language that's in the state's guidelines.
So do we need to flesh that out to say how that will be determined? Or is it, you're just going to do a market?
A market analysis is done by an appraiser. You have the, you have the option of having your own appraisal done on the structure. If you don't want to do that, you can take the assessed value. We can use that.
Okay.
You're usually better off to buy your own appraisal. But that's your choice.
Well, not anymore. It's a not anymore.
Yeah, let's not go there.
Yeah, right. That's a different department.
But yeah, no, there are various ways of doing that, and it just has to be in agreement that, you know, you've presented me with something that makes sense, it's done by a professional who's, you know, capable of doing that, and that's what we'll agree to use.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, just one last, going back to Shipwreck and the volume thing you used, is there grandfathering? So if someone bought a property, assuming with a 30% volume, that had some expansion opportunities, and if you change it to just a height, you know, will they be grandfathered that if they bought it and the ordinance was in place when they bought it, that they'll be able to execute that? Or will what you're doing supersede so that, so there may be cases?
Yeah, no, if they haven't, if they haven't already proposed a change, if they don't already have an application into us, they're not, they're not grandfathered just because they bought it under the old ordinance. The new ordinance will take precedent.
So that, that maybe is where there'll be some, that may be perceived as losing?
Sure. And you'll note that it says, it gives you a cap height of 20 feet, for example, or the existing height of the structure. So if you're already at 25, you get to keep 25.
Any more? Thank you. Public comment before we put this on the table? None? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank Brian and his staff, and Jay and his staff. I mean, these folks spend countless hours, and this is their, their main focus, and we're lucky to have them as resources, and we know, we appreciate the work they do, and, you know, they're really on the, you know, on the front end of all of this growth and development activity. So we're lucky to have them, and we appreciate their competency and their good work. So, thank you.
Counselor Catarina?
Again, this was before ordinance, so we have looked at it. And being, again, in real estate, I know the shoreline zoning issues, they've changed, and the Attorney General's Office is going to start getting all over towns who haven't updated. So that's a major driving force behind doing this. We don't want to be in violation of the state shoreline zoning rules, or there could be fines, or whatever, so.
Any more? Nope? I just, I miss Cliff's Antiques.
Me too, bringing back.
And I'll never publicly crash one of your ordinance committee meetings again.
Thank you.
I threw that thing into a tailspin. I apologize. All those in favor? Order number 20031, first reading and scheduled public hearing on the new small wireless facility licensing ordinance. Jay?
Sure, I'm back again. So let's see, this is an item that actually was brought up to me a few months ago by our IT director, happened to send me an email, said, hey, are you aware of this thing that's happening with these small cell facilities? And as I started to dig into it, we identified that, in fact, we probably need to start having a conversation, because there was changes at both the federal and more importantly at the state level, just this last summer, that constrained our local ability to regulate small cell facilities, 5G-type facilities, in the public right-of-way. So essentially, our home rule was superseded, and we have to allow for facilities within the public right-of-way. However, the legislation at the, both the federal and state level, had, it gave the town some authority over a few of the elements, the citing of these. And those really are related to, one, licensing fees. They are in our public right-of-way that the town owns, so there is some licensing fees that the town can enact. The, the higher end of the fee structure was, is capped by federal action. There's aesthetics, so you can get into the placement and how these things look within the right-of-way, but again, you have to allow for them. And then what's deemed a shot clock, or how long it takes to process an application when it comes in. And so interestingly, after that conversation with the IT director, we did start to get some calls from providers saying, hey, we're, you know, we're interested in coming in town. And we sort of said, well, we don't have an ordinance in place, but we're working on something. Would you mind sort of waiting? And they, they've been patient, which is good. And so what you have before you is language that's really aimed at those three elements that we're able to approach. Frankly, you know, wireless facilities, 5G, that's not my area of expertise, so hopefully you don't have any questions about the technology itself. But we did spend some time taking a look at model ordinances, both sort of nationwide, talking to other municipalities in Maine. Talked to a number, my cohorts, not a lot of communities have really started to take this up, and when I talked to them and they, you know, talked about the changes at the state level, they were like, oh geez, like, we weren't aware of that either. So I think there's going to be, start to be some more action around, around this item. So I think as Brian did, I'll sort of stay at the high level. I'm not going to walk you through every bit of the ordinance, but obviously, we have three members of the ordinance committee member who we discussed a number of these items with, and so with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Is there, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was going to ask for public comment, so please, ask a question.
Is there anything about noise? Some of these things can have noise. Is that anything that can be regulated?
I guess I haven't heard noise, haven't seen in my reading on these, that noise has been an issue with these? So that's not something that we explored to date.
So you don't know whether or not we're allowed to regulate that, or we're not allowed to regulate that?
So where we're able to, we may, I don't know for certain, and again, I haven't seen that in my reading as an issue, but certainly.
Any public comment?
No, I'm sorry. I had one question.
I'm sorry.
This is a bit of a repeat. We asked some of these questions in ordinance, but I thought for the benefit of the council, it might be helpful to talk again. I think we had somebody from AT&amp;T who was looking to put up four of these, or something like that. I was kind of curious if we had a, you know, any new numbers on how many are out there already, and if there's going to be four from AT&amp;T, can we have any idea of expecting how many there will be, and, you know, what timeframes?
Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, as you referenced, the representative from AT&amp;T said they're looking at four or five locations in town. We don't know what those locations are yet. I haven't heard any specific numbers from any other providers at this point. These are typically, you know, as I understand them, again, this isn't sort of, the technical aspect isn't, isn't my realm, but as I understand them, I really sort of think of these sort of as, as boosters, and you locate them more in dense neighborhoods or commercial neighborhoods. So you might see a few in the Oak Hill area, or maybe as, as one example. But I don't think you would see them, you know, in the lower density type areas of our community. So we'd probably see more of these in the growth areas. How many that would be, I unfortunately can't answer that. I did explore the question. The question did come up, is are there any in town? I was unaware of any. I've asked other department heads if they're familiar. We aren't aware that there are any currently in town.
All right, public comment now?
I was trying to get to you.
Hi, Allison Bristol, Sixth Bayview Avenue, Higgins Beach. And I went to the last ordinance meeting to hear about shoreline zoning and got the added benefit of learning about the 5G technology. And the first thing I would say is, as an AT&amp;T customer, I would be more than happy to have a booster to make my reception at Higgins Beach better. But I'm reading, and listening to Jay at the meeting and reading over his memo in the proposed draft, my concern is that a 10-foot antenna on top of a utility pole, along with a refrigerator-sized equipment box, would really be an eyesore along Bayview Avenue, or any of the roads that may, you know, go along the water or the marshes. And so I'm wondering if there might be some language that could be added to the draft to better protect those views and vistas. So I poked around a little bit, and I was looking for examples of other ordinances in Maine, and actually found one from York that I shared with Jay. They have a wireless communications facilities ordinance that was the last amended in 2016, so it probably has to be brought up to speed for the 5G. That includes protecting scenic and visual character of a community and its purpose. It also includes provisions that require a minimum 65-foot setback from residential structures, and this might be to address noise concerns. An approval process that requires elevation drawings and written descriptions of the need for a particular facility to be in a particular location, as well as in a butter notification. So adding similar language to Scarborough's ordinance, to the extent possible, would better protect the scenic views in Scarborough's residents. And also worth mentioning, I also found a press report on Seacoast Online from last October that reported on AT&amp;T's 5G application in York. And listed as immediate town concerns were visual impacts, sidewalk blockage, which Jay has addressed, and municipal lease for the town which Jay has addressed, but also one of their immediate concerns was possible radiation and sound from humming noise. So something we should certainly do diligence on if we haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Counselor Catarina?
Yeah, as mentioned, this went through ordinance, asked a lot of questions about it. I will tell you that this summer, after the state passed whatever they passed, Representative Chiazo, Chris Chiazo, who used to be on the town council, he's on the EUT committee that deals with these issues, he sent me an email, gave me a heads up that we He sent me an email, gave me a heads-up that we were way out of line with what we had and needed to look at this. So, there is concern from the state and feds, for better or worse, that, you know, we have to meet certain guidelines. So, that's part of where this is coming from.
Any more? Counselor Glassing?
Yeah, I think Ms. Bristol's comments deserve a lot of attention. To make sure that we are protect, everybody wants better cell coverage, but we want to make sure that we protect property owners as well. And I guess a question for Jay is, did you look at the town of York and to see any other things about aesthetics? The distance from the residence, and why or why not did you decide to include that?
As I mentioned to Ms. Bristol in our email, actually, that's one of the planners I did speak to. And he actually informed me that they didn't have an ordinance that regulates these. I think their wireless telecommunications ordinance, or whatever it is, is really about, much like we have an ordinance, about wireless telecommunications. So, they have some language in there that I think is, you know, might, could be applicable. So, yeah, he was one of the, he was actually one of the planners who's like, "Oh, man, I guess I gotta get something ready for my town meeting."
For this guy, yeah.
Yep, so, but certainly, at the direction of council, there's some additional things to look at. You know, I don't see why we couldn't keep poking a little bit as we go through this iterative process where we still have the planning board public hearing and your public hearing and so on and such forth, so.
You know, clearly, the vendor would want as few restrictions as possible. And, you know, we want that to proceed, like people say, "Hey, you know, everyone wants better cell coverage." But do we have the protections in there to protect specific property owners? And what would they, what would they, how would it work? You know, you'd want to get feedback from the vendors as well. Okay, what if the ordinance said this? You know, what, how would that, how would that work for you? I mean, you know, I think the aesthetics argument and, you know, potentially any kind of disturbance. I mean, we saw the absolute state huge issue over the meters and people's concern. Whatever your opinion is, was, or is, on the metered boxes that CMP put out. And the state eventually had to say, "Well, we'll let you do have the old box." So, there is people who actually have that concern, and I think it's at least worth exploring that.
Counselor Clucci?
Wow, have you guys been busy between ordinance and planning? This is a lot to digest. I just want to say, it's really exciting technology, 5G, and really transformative. So, I'm excited for it coming down the pike. I don't know how long it'll be before it is actually having a big impact in Scarborough. So, I think we do have some time to work out some of the details, hopefully, and understand how, you know, we can adopt the best we can. Thanks for your comments.
Counselor Katerina?
Just for the public and council to know, having been on the council, we had cellphone came up, I forget when. Well, not previous councils. And a lot of people, cell towers, I should say, and a lot of people, you know, were concerned about health concerns and whatever. Well, federal law says you can't even take that into consideration, so just want to make that clear.
Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, another point of clarification is that, you know, this, I'm not certain, but I think the ordinance that was referred to in York had to do with macro cell, you know, the big tower cell towers, like the one in front of the Public Safety Building. What we're talking about is small cell wireless. And those are things that are going to be put on, you know, on existing poles for the most part, or they'll be smaller poles, as I understand it. So, the other thing is, I'd say is that it's absolutely right for us to cycle through the public comment and questions, yet at the same time, do be fair, to be fair, I'm sure the vendors, you know, the telecoms providers will have additional information. You know, so we ought to make sure that that's part of the process as well, as we cycle through.
Just to be clear, it's my understanding, they can do it now with or without us, so, you know. I'm not saying we rush this, but there's also maybe some urgency to getting something in place for fear that they're going to do it anyway.
Just on that point, I believe it's, we would have 60 days to process the application. Now, we have no ordinance currently right now, so I'm not sure what we would do to process it. And 90 days to approve it, again, having no ordinance, I think we would just stay silent on it. After 90 days, they can go. That's as I understand it, barring writing in an ordinance that sort of works us through the process.
Jay, I know you just said that, but I apologize. I'm running out of steam. So, we have 90 days, and then they can start using, they can start using.
They could install one. Yep.
Which I know you just said, but.
Yep.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, I mean, I guess in purpose tonight, yeah, I mean, I'd support this, but if there's ways to incorporate some of the public comments wherever we can, I think that would be great to tweak it if we could, so. It's great.
Yep. Any more?
Yeah, I mean, I am looking at York's, and it does say micro cell. So, there's something about micro cell in it, so.
I was changing voicemails today with a plan in York.
Okay, I'm going to actually abstain, simply because I ran out of steam. I had, this is the first time I've seen this. So, I look at this packet, and obviously, it looks like we should do this, and Allison's concerns, I think, are valid. But I just don't, I, with the packet, I just don't feel right voting on something I didn't even have time to sit down and spend time on, so. But those are my comments.
I can't, I don't believe you can abstain.
Can I? I can't abstain?
Unless you have a, I'm sorry, I'm.
All right, I'll just vote no on it. It's fine.
Yeah, under the rules.
Soft no. Okay, fair enough.
Qualified no, yeah.
We've all been there. We've all done the qualified no, right?
This is a first read, right?
Yes.
And schedule a public hearing.
Totally agree. I totally agree. I just don't feel, I just don't feel appropriate if I haven't read the, I haven't done my homework.
Jay, you talked about the planning board process. Were you talking about in general for? So, this is, we're not looking to send this to the planning board. We're looking to send this to a public hearing and then adopt that, right?
I guess I don't believe this would need to go to planning board. I think I might have misspoke, because in my mind, typically, these ordinances do roll through planning board. But yeah, where this isn't in Chapter 405 or 405(c) or (b), or the ones I typically work in, you're right. It doesn't necessarily require planning board. And so, certainly, depending on when council decides to schedule this, I think if you, you know, staff could work on looking at a few of the elements that were discussed here tonight and potentially bring forth some additional language for your consideration through the process.
But you don't see any benefit to putting it in front of planning? That may have been a tough question. It's not, that's not what we're looking to do.
Right, yeah, and I'm sorry if I missed that.
Counselor Hamel?
I just wanted to make a public apology for specifically requesting that Jay include that little booklet on, you know, small micro cell technology, so.
No, that was great. That's the only thing I. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? I hung my head. I just, listen, I can't do it. I didn't read the. Uh, order number, order number 20032, first reading and scheduled a public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 313A, the Town of Scarborough Property Tax Assistant Ordinance, Section 5, Determination of Eligibility and Amount of Eligibility. And I believe, Counselor, yep, Counselor Katerina will lead it off.
Yeah, I brought this forward to ordinance for a few reasons. One was, you know, I was thinking about the discontent with the tax breaks that we've been giving to so-called wealthy corporations. So, there's some of that discontent in town and the fear that we're not doing enough for seniors who may be having trouble with taxes. Also, as an attempt, a good faith attempt to help out people with some of the, may have been negatively impacted by revaluation to some degree. And, and just so you know, I'm sorry, I should have started by saying, this is raised at $750, the senior tax credit. It's getting late, sorry. From $600 to $750. $750 will buy a lot more fuel, food, or prescriptions for those seniors who are in need. And frankly, it's the right thing to do. Just a few facts for you. The median age of those currently receiving the $600, median age is 77. The median income is $20,000. Their median property tax is $3,300, which means that they're paying a percent, 16.5% of their income to taxes. With the $600, their tax, they're only, reduces their percentage of income to tax to 13.5%. With $750, it would push it further down to be 12.75%. The cost is an additional $58,294. We had 10% increase in participation in years one, over years one and two, which I would expect with a new program like this. We had 3% increase in the third year of it, as people became more familiar with it. It also helps people who are rentals. You have to be 62 or over and, thank you, 10 years resident, and your household income cannot exceed $50,000. When it was first developed, it was meant to be a fairly simple way and to help out, because the state had been messing around with things. And as an aside, since I have the floor, homestead exemption this year is going up to $25,000, which is, means that your value, if you're the primary, if it's your primary home, you get immediate reduction, your valuation of $25,000. You have to have lived in your home for one year, and I believe they're taking applications till April 1st. So, I, believe it or not, there are people out there who forget to apply. You just go to the assessor's office, or you could contact me and I can get you an application. But anyway, that's it. So, that's where I'm coming from with this. And, I'm sorry, I'm being very verbose. Paul's giving me the signal.
No, 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 I was just, does timing the second reading?
Yes, and what I want to do with this is have our first reading to the public hearing, because I want to tee it up for budget, make sure we've got money in the budget for it, and then complete it once after the budget season. So, hold off second reading until June, I guess. All right? That's it.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
You just did. Good. Discussion? Counselor Hamel?
Yes, I am in support of this, the concept of it, the need of it. I think it is, you know, definitely something that will have an impact. I think we are, have we been remiss in terms of, you know, trying to do things for the taxpayers and to provide some additional relief? So, I think those are all good reasons. At the same time, I think this is just one more apple that's got to go into the cider press of the budget process. So, you know, the timing of the, you know, of the second reading and the final approval vote, I think is, will allow for that.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, I mean, I guess conceptually, I am concerned about the budget process. I think we're spending on this program about $240,000. This adds, if I read it right, another 60 or 70K to the budget, you know, draw, if you will, or impact. It is a 25% increase, which is pretty significant. I would rather see something indexed that it increase, whatever the base level is, if it's 600, it increases 3% a year or 5% a year. There is no free money. This just shifts the tax burden to other taxpayers. I would much rather us focus on how do we take a look at our expenditures and reduce our expenditures so all taxpayers benefit. So, I'm fine tonight with this being a placeholder with the caveat that it is not determined, there's not an expectation it needs to get through the budget process, and we will, if we do this, just, there will be other things we won't be able to do. So, we'll have to make choices.
Counselor Glassing?
Yeah, I totally concur with those comments by Counselor Hayes. You know, so if you, if you're making 55K, you're not eligible. And yet, you know, this is going to be an impact on budget. The mill rate is going to be a challenge this year. So, you know, as long as we're not being obligated to that with this, moving this forward, I think it was, you know, it's a good thing to look at.
Counselor Clucci?
Yeah, I, you know, referring back to the reval, sorry. Low-income and lower-value properties were disproportionately impacted. And we talked about this at that time. And I think this is at least something that we can do to help compensate for that, because those folks saw massive increases where some of the folks at the higher end of the scale did not. So, I fully support this, and thank you for bringing it forward. I do have a question, and this refers to the last order as well. Do we, when we say schedule a public hearing, do we usually actually schedule it or just say that we're scheduling? Because there's no date on the prior order number, and there's no date on this one.
This one is scheduled, would be scheduled for the next meeting on the 18th. But in the motion, it states that. If you look at the motion, it's in the motion.
I'm in the wrong place.
First reading and scheduled public hearing.
For Wednesday, March 18th.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Does anybody want to offer up an amendment to make that later and closer to budget season?
I'm confused now. I thought we, I thought it was proposed to come back in June.
Yeah, this is just a public, this is just a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing.
But I just, if we were concerned about making it part of the budget process, I didn't know if making the public hearing in the middle of the budget process would make the most sense.
I think it may get lost. But that's my opinion. I'd rather have a separate public hearing.
And I guess I'd be in the other place. Until we know what the budget looks like, it might be really helpful to have it in the middle of the budget process.
That was what I was suggesting.
As we try to get input from the community about, you know, what are the trade-offs they're willing to make? Either higher taxes, or what programs do we need to look at? And what, yeah, so I'd rather have it in the middle of the process when people have more information.
Are you making an amendment?
Making an amendment.
So, I'd make an amendment to have this, I don't know, Tom, what would be a good date?
Probably your first meeting in May, but then you'll be, second reading scheduled for the 15th, so you'll be very near the end of budget at that point. So, whatever date that is, the regular meeting date, first meeting in May.
So.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, that's fine.
So, amendment would be to have the, have the public hearing in that first meeting in May.
It's May 6th, I believe.
May 6th?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment?
Makes sense to me.
All those in favor of the amendment? Okay. Back to the main motion on the table. Is any more discussion? No? Okay. I'll just add, I will echo Counselor Clucci's thoughts. I think, you know, we talked a lot about our 3% tax rate goal, and I've always perceived it as protection specifically to this resident that has such a hard time paying their bills. So, there's a lot of families, maybe I'm not going to be very popular for saying this, but there's a lot of six-figure families in Scarborough that can afford to pay a little bit more. And this is a way of using a mechanism to shift that burden ever so slightly away from our most, people that need it the most, and more towards people that I think are willing to pay higher taxes from time to time. Not everybody, don't quote me on that. But I, but I think this is a mechanism to do that, so. As it sits right now, I support it, and I also agree with actually Counselor Hayes, where it would be nice to set it and forget it, and actually have in it a mechanism where we don't have to do this every year. Because I've been on this council for a very short period of time, and it's come up kind of two or three times already. So, it would be nice to just know that we have it predictable. Predictability is a good thing, so. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, order number 20033, first reading and scheduled a second reading on the bond order for approved municipal and school capital improvement projects and the refunding of certain general obligation bonds for the town of Scarborough. And I believe our finance director is here.
I'll introduce and Ruth will back clean up, and to the extent that I miss something, which is likely perhaps. But this is the time of year where we do go back up to the bond market. Our financial advisors advise that the April, early May timeframe is kind of the optimal time at the market. It may be very fortuitous right now given some of the things happening in the market as we speak. What's before you is a mix of town council-approved borrowing through a budget, the budget process, as well as some, I think there are three different voter-approved items through the years. And we've worked with bond council to segregate out those different categories, if you will. if you will. You will note that it spans over a series of fiscal years, some of them dating back, and the oldest one happens to do with, with actually land bond monies that by their very definition in nature, we don't borrow until there's a need. So it's not surprising that those are some very old authorized bonds just now coming, put into play. So, perhaps at a risk of confusing things further, this bond order is about six point six million dollars in total. Will actually be going to bond for seven point four eight million, and that's because we already have additional bond authority prior from council that we simply have not exercised, and, and these projects are to the point where we do need to go out and secure those, those funds at this point. So again, this bond order is for just over six point six million, but the actual issue that we go to market with is seven point four eight million. The matter was brought to council, excuse me, the finance committee somewhat quickly last week, and we appreciate them squeezing us on the agenda. There was a request from, I believe, Councilor Clucci at the time, to include an estimate of the likely maturity or term of these bonds, which Ruth has done. She's put together kind of a detailed sheet in back. In addition, I believe there was a request for indicating how much money's actually been spent to date, and so that was information included as well. It's worth noting for council and for the public as well, that not all these projects are created equal. Many of them, we would be bonding for a five-year term because of their nature and longevity, whereas some other ones are longer term, again, because of what type of project they are in their useful life. We'll finalize those details with, with our financial advisor, but we think this is a fair estimate of where those will generally be following. Lastly, we are, have put together a fairly tight schedule to get to market by the end of this month, and so it starts tonight. We do have rating calls scheduled with the rating agencies, so this month we'll be busy working with them and culminate, again, at the end of the month with a competitive bond sale. So with that, Ruth and I are muddled with questions if you have them.
Councilor Clucci?
So I, I have been able to look through this, and the only question mark in my mind right now relates to the eight corners portables, and whether that's, well, one, I think we should be transparent, if it is over four-hundred-thousand-dollar improvement, we should be saying that, and, and maybe actually show an accounting of this is what that capital improvement has cost to date, and this is what this will add to it, so that we can just make a formal decision that, yes, we want this to, kind of like we did earlier, you know, kind of, not necessarily tightly fit with the charter, but be justifiable.
The, the applicable section, the section nine oh seven of your town charter, it has to do with any single capital improvement. And I guess, partial response to your question, I would suggest to you that though they are similar projects, they're different schools and they're.
No, I'm not, same school, it's going to be attached to the existing one.
Yeah, you're talking about.
The eight corners, yeah. Pleasant Hill and Finewood.
My comments are confined to the four corners of what's in front of you. So, there are two projects, there are two separate portables of two separate schools.
Okay.
I know your other concern has to do whether, is, whether this is actually considered a capital project.
No, I. That was my concern with, and that's what I was trying to clarify with Jay. His response was, yes, this is a capital improvement, it's permanent. I actually disagree. I don't think it is. But if that's the case, if that's the standard that we're using, then these are two parts of the same capital improvement.
John, can we say this on the discussion, what's on the table? Is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted, I just wanted, because I want to respond to it, but I can't right now. Peter?
And this actually was part of the lead-in. The other question that I think was asked at the finance committee by Councilor is that, and this is a question for both Ruth and Tom, just wanted the verification that everything that's on this list was something that was approved by the town council either in last year's budget or in prior budget. So everything you see has been something that's been approved by the town council, and I, we didn't have time to go back and check everything off. I think you guys were going to verify that every one of these projects fit that bill, so I'm just looking for confirmation.
Absolutely, with the exception of voter-approved authorization.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Hammel?
So my question is, so, you know, you see the total here is, you know, is five point four million or so, something like that, and it goes back to 2014, and there's a detailed list. So what's the, is that just history of what was previously bonded, or is this, are these things that were approved in those years that are now going to go bond?
Those are, these are all items that were approved and authorized in those particular fiscal years, but were now for one reason or another in a position to actually secure your.
They weren't funded, they haven't been funded yet.
Correct.
Okay, great.
In some cases, the projects have been delayed or deferred. In other cases, we've funded money and this will reimburse ourselves, if you will. But there's any number of reasons why, you know, there's been a delay between authorization and the need to secure financing.
So my follow-on question to that is, what did we bond last year, and did it have a similar tail going back to 2014, 2015? And I know, I know you, this is, you know, not the material in front of us, but I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, you know, year to year, it's, it's variable.
Yeah.
Frankly, the funding for the public safety building, just given the size, has been the tail that wags the dog in the last two or three years. But more times than not, we have found ourselves in a position of funding in the order of four million dollars or so on a fairly consistent basis, and then there are anomalies, like the public safety building.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Sorry, Don. Councilor Glyssine?
Councilor Hammel, we did ask that question in the finance committee, and there is sometimes when it's not spent, and the town goes back and says, do you actually have the plan to spend this? And it would get dropped off.
Okay, great.
So there, that actually, I don't, we didn't go through examples, but we did.
Terrific.
We did ask that question, and it has happened, where they just say, no, it's not going to be spent.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I'll stick, this will just be a question, but the failure of the turf and track, did that affect the bond order or what we, what items we included?
It wasn't.
It wouldn't have been in there anyways.
If they had approved it, we might have put some of it in there.
And even then, it would be particular to whether the work was done or it is expected to be undertaken. We are required through IRS and SEC rules that we cannot borrow money, we need to spend it within a certain timeframe of received or proceeds. This is the so-called arbitrage rules, and those are getting tighter and tighter. There's a six-month, a twelve-month, and an eighteen-month test you need to apply. So it's, it's important that we don't get ahead of ourselves.
The other piece I was going to say is that we normally ask the departments, because, you know, we don't know what their projects are, and we ask them what they're going to spend between, what they think they're going to spend between, like, now and December. So that gives us like a nine-month window to, you know, so we have the money in hand if they actually do spend.
Councilor Hammel?
Sorry, sorry to, to, you know, ask so many questions, but, so is this, has this been approved by the finance committee? What's in front of us?
So this was discussed at the finance committee, and there was a motion to approve that wasn't seconded, and not because we thought that there was anything wrong, all of our questions were answered satisfactorily, it's, from my perspective, but I didn't feel comfortable approving it because I got it at the beginning of the meeting, it didn't have time to fully digest it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, and the only thing we did ask for that they did is to, to give, we didn't have the summary page, so they put the summary page together based on the detail for the rest of the council.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Any more questions?
There is one typo in here, it doesn't change the totals, but it does change it for the project, and that is in the nineteen-twenty school department, middle school HVAC program, it should be two sixty-three, seven ninety-five instead of nine seventy-five.
That's unacceptable. I'm.
Sevens, nines, they're so close.
He's an apt speaker.
All right, do I have a motion on the table?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion. Councilor Clucci?
What was I talking about?
You were talking about the.
Second unit. So it's a, it's a perma-tempor, it's a, it's an undefined status, but anyways, my, my point with this, I guess, is, I think we've demonstrated that we can be reasonable, and I feel like with this particular project, we've made a cascading series of really poor decisions that are going to negatively impact our students, and I, I want us to do it right. I would fully support connecting this thing to the building, so that the kids don't have to get bundled up before going to their classroom, and connecting, you know, adding these classrooms, like, let's, I'm open to doing it right, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, and I, I guess that's all I have to say. Technically, I think there could be a potential charter issue with this, but it's not clear, because we're not clear what this thing is that we, we put. It's not a permanent building by some standards, it is a permanent building by others, and I just, that's where I am.
Yeah, and we, you and I talked about this on the phone, but we, we had this discussion at some pretty great length when this first came to us, because this, these trailers were split up in such a way, particularly now that they've gone over, that before they were not combined, they were not at four-hundred thousand, and now that they've gone over, they are at four-hundred thousand. And we did make a, we did make a decision to treat these as two separate projects, and I'm going off memory here, but the, what was pitched to us, so to speak, was that the eight, the second trailer that we're looking at now was not a certainty.
Okay.
So they, it was, however, they were going to lay the slab just in case they needed it. So the slab was the size of two of these bad boys, right? But they didn't know if they needed the second one. Now, in retrospect to, you know, does that pass the sniff test maybe a year later? No, I don't know, but I do know that we, as a council, and please, anybody else that was involved in this can correct me, but we, this is, we, this is, a lot of the energy at the workshop was spent around this, so. But I, I remember the decision point for me personally was, we don't know that we need the second trailer.
I think that's fair, and I think that's, on the site plan, it actually specifically calls out if needed.
Sure, yep. But I just wanted to respond to that, and again, if anybody else recalls differently, please chime in, but I just, I wanted to address that, because I think it's fair. Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
I have a question. In the site plan, are these referred to as trailers or modulars? Because when I think trailers, I think of horses.
I know.
When I think of modulars, I think of our children trying to learn.
You're going to have to ask Councilor Clucci, and he, he knows.
I can bring it up. Keep going.
Okay, all right, all right. Put that on hold, and we're going to, Councilor Hammel?
So, I know it's late in the day, and maybe that's benefit, because hopefully many people are not watching, but is there any thought given to, all the discussion we've had about austerity and the hole that we have going into the budget process, has there been any thought given to the possibility of, and you can, whether this person is in your Hall of Shame or Hall of Fame, pulling a, a lapage and not approving this? Now, this has been, you know, this has been previously approved, but not funding it, and we, as I understand, would have the authority to do, to do that, to not fund it.
The modulars? Is that what you mean?
I'm saying the whole thing.
The whole.
Oh.
The, the five million. You know, like, I look through this list, and I see pickup trucks and a lot of equipment, and, and I know a lot of these things have had tails on them, and I'm, I'm not proposing this, I'm, I'm asking the question as a hypothetical, is that a possibility, and if so, when would that decision be made?
Well, I, we've already spent four point eight million of this, and we're expected to spend another two point six between now and December, so, and we've done so on the authority granted through some sort of various approval processes, and we've not overstepped our authority, so I think it presents a serious cash flow issue.
So how, how will we spend something if we, you know, how do we bond something that we've already spent?
Well, depending, yeah.
Arda?
We use other funds and reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds. These projects are always rolling, and frankly, the frequency of our bonding annually is fairly, much more frequent than most places, so we're able to float, float the money and then reimburse ourselves.
I see. Okay.
Thank you. Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, I mean, but I just kind of wanted to respond, I think, to Councilor, I mean, to the extent we've already spent the money, that, that's committed, but I think technically, I mean, not that we would, but if we haven't spent two point six, I suspect that we'd be a process probably by which the town council could decide not to use those funds, if that's something we wanted to do. I think, I think the decision point, your question about when would the decision need to be made? I think Tom's saying, if Tom wants to go to the market in the next thirty days, that decision would be tonight or very soon, that we would have to take something off the list that he wouldn't go to the market for.
I mean, this isn't an ask, though, these, this is, we're talking about reversing ten years of voter approval right now? I mean, right?
Counsel, counsel approvals.
Well, some is voters, there is.
The voter approvals, I don't think we can, but I think, I mean, I'm just technically, I think, answering Don's question, that technically, there probably would be some pathway to do that, not, but I'm, not here to suggest we necessarily do that, but I think it's technically possible.
Councilor Glyssine, and then Councilor Clucci.
And I, I guess, I'm a little confused now, that, so we paid for the trailer slash modular slash capital slash whatever it is with school impact fees, but now we're going to bond them?
That's a different trailer.
Those are ones that are already.
The second trailer doesn't exist yet.
No, I know it's a different one, but if we still have school impact fee money, why wouldn't we fund those in the same way?
I think that's a fair point. I think during, they just, they put it in their CIP in the budget, they, the, the school board, but this.
So we're going to pay for these many times over because of, well, we're going to pay more for them because of interest, right, compared to if we have.
Oh, yeah, sure.
School impact fee money.
I mean, we're, we're also spending, we're also bonding eighty-eight grand to outfit a classroom. I mean, we're bonding eighty-eight grand to buy desks, so if we want to go down that rabbit hole, we.
We did last year.
I just, I mean, the same rationale we use for school impact, using the school impact fees, that we can only, we can only refund or spend them on growth impacts.
Let's go with Councilor Cattering, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at bond rates right now, and they're like one percent. So you've got to think about that, too. It's, it's low. So if you're going to borrow money, because you want to make your cash flow, in a business you do this, you want to make your cash flow better, you want to have more cash to use, whatever. You, you choose what you borrow on, particularly when it's at a lower rate like this. You don't pay cash all the time for everything, because that's crazy. But, there's a question in what makes sense to pay cash, what makes sense to put on the charge cards, so to speak, and I think that's where you're coming from, Councilor Clucci, am I right, with your thoughts on what's longer term? Because we do have five a year, which is a, a shorter period.
We tend to accelerate things. I had asked Ruth to put together that schedule that showed what we had spent versus what's remaining to be spent. Kind of, I was thinking along the same lines, Don, not of not doing these, but given that we have other projects in the pipeline, we're not reducing our debt very much with this bond order. In truth, that probably isn't our decision to make today with this, but I wanted to understand it. So that, that's why I had gone through that process, and I, I think Peter's right, we have the ability to do that, just whether it's a good idea, I don't know, the bond rates are low, and, and they're going to go up, and so I, I guess it's, I was conflicted, but I wanted to understand it a little better. To just answer Senior Councilor Johnson's question, I was incorrect, they're not.
Senior?
I'll senior. I'll come up with a better one.
That sticks, that one sticks. It's okay, because you just woke him up.
This is like the first time I've ever gotten a counselor in before an A.
That's going to stick. He's going to be.
Yes, it is.
It's going to stick.
So they're referred to on the site plan as one portable with two classrooms phase one, and one portable with two classrooms phase two.
Okay, so they're referred to as portals.
Yeah. Now, you have your answer, Senior Councilor.
Just, just a quick response to, to the question about why, I think the decision about why we use the impact fees for the, because it was, it wasn't in the budget, they needed to put them in place, that was a place we could go to. But we did have the conversation we're having tonight, the feeling really is those fees are supposed to be used for brick and mortar. I mean, it's really, we had some of that same dilemma, that is this really brick and mortar, or is this really the intent? So I think we, we did it that way so we could get them ordered in place. Then we said, what they need to do is put it in the capital budget going forward. And that's another question, whether that's a legitimate capital item. But, but to answer your question, that's, that's why we're not trying to lean into the impact fees, we're trying to leave those in place for, and, and we're going to need them if we're doing a school down the road, that's.
Well, and we have been paying down debt with them.
Every two years they get applied. They get applied every year, what we collected the prior, second year prior.
Any more discussion? Counselor Koochie, could you, you said something about this.
Never mind, I can't.
No, I wanted to, I wanted to dive deeper into what you said, but I, I've lost it.
What did I say?
Something you, when you were discussing that, it's in our, it's in our authority, why would we do it or not? And you said.
Oh, to not bond.
Right. You made some reference about increasing.
Okay, so overall, I think this year we're scheduled to pay down about seven-plus million of debt.
Yeah.
And this is taking on seven-plus million of debt. So our overall debt is going to be about the same as what it was.
Sure. Better interest rate. Better interest rate, same.
Yeah, that's fair. I think that's true.
I mean, I think.
No, go ahead, please.
A minute, I think to address the question, yeah, I mean, the question, yeah, I mean, if we can borrow money when it's cheaper, that makes more sense.
Sure, right.
But I think what Counsel Hamel was trying to get to, if we don't need to spend the money in the first place, that's, that's a better place to be, you know, if you can save a million dollars by not spending.
Don't grant authority in the first place. I mean, rather than getting way down the road and trying to unwind it and causing.
Well, yes.
Don't authorize it in the first place.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Would it be possible to make a motion, an amendment to this, to this order? And the amendment that I'm contemplating would be to, to bond, put forward bonding the amount that we've spent so far, which is 4.809298, but for the amount of money that we have not spent so far, 2.670585, except for what was voter approved, which would include the public safety building, that that not be approved at this time.
Is there a second before we discuss it?
Second for conversation.
Can, can the finance director, right, I feel like that, the finance director needs to address what would happen, right? So.
I can't explain with these fees, but there are some contracts that are already in place that would, you know, we, we said we would pay so much during the summer for road construction or whatever it is. So, yes, we haven't spent those funds yet, but, you know, the summer work is coming. It's the same thing with the school department. They do all of their new stuff, cleaning the floors, buying computers, installing computers during the summer months. So, you know, if we said no to some of this, then they would, they wouldn't be able to do their jobs.
So this was technically approved by the voters last year when they approved the town budget in June. Is that correct?
The school's budget, yes.
The school budget, but for the, the other expenses that are not, that are municipal expenses, no.
No, but the council did approve the authority to spend.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's no requirement that the voters approve.
Okay.
There are two pieces. There's the authority to spend, which is the budget process, and then there's the authority to fund it. So.
Right.
Bond council usually likes us to do them both at the same time.
Right.
However, it's hard to bond a 39 million project upfront when you're only going to spend 36 or 37 million. So that's one of the reasons we try to hold off on the bonding until later in the process.
So this is hard to do real time, but what I'm after is there an amount of, that we have not funded yet that would be within our authority not to fund and to study further? And it doesn't mean we're not going to approve it, but would it give us a week? Would it give us some time to scrutinize that, to see if there's any opportunity? Otherwise, it's on to next year, and, you know, it's mortar to the bridge.
One thing that might help with this, we talked about in Finance Committee, the example of the fire truck, it's voter approved, but we're going to pay 465,000 on that with this bond order. It takes over a year to actually outfit the truck, to, you know, between procurement and getting it detailed and everything else that they need to do. And I think that's applicable to several of these items, so I don't, I don't know how much opportunity there is without having a real negative impact. I can't say I know for sure what that is, but my sense is that it's not real big.
Okay.
And then with the fire truck, for example, the fire chief was able to negotiate a deal that if he paid a certain percentage upfront, the total cost would be less. So, you know, so that all plays into it. The departments are really trying to find the best, I don't want to say cheapest, but the, the best cost for, for what they're trying to do.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, just one clear, so one, one consequence, if we're to break up, break it up in two different allotments, if you will, I mean, would that have an impact on transaction fees and other things? I mean, are there transactional, so if we, you know, get, Counsel, if we did, you know, 3 million now, and, you know, the balance in June after we had some time to look at it, by breaking it up in two different blocks, are there, there are opportunity costs? I mean, there are fees, the, the bond fees are pretty.
The cost of issuance fees, those would, we'd still be having to pay those, but we'd probably have to pay them twice. We, we have to go back to the.
I mean, there's, there's certain fixed costs that you got to cover, so that, so that, that would add some transactional costs, I think, Counsel Hamel, to what, to what you're suggesting.
Okay.
Yeah, and even if we were able to parse out those things that were contractually obligated for in the voter approval, which I think we could, and identify what's that left of, you know, what's that, that amount left that you could consider, I'm gravely concerned about what it would do, what sort of signals it would send to future investors that to also potentially the rating agencies would catch wind that the governing body is not consistent in its, in its, you know, following through on its commitments and prior optimizations. I can't quantify how that would affect us, but I, I think there could be some negative effect with that, that kind of unplanned decision. I think your better choice is, as a governing body, don't approve it in the first place. Don't pull it back out.
So wait till next year.
Wait till next year.
Next month.
They used to have a New York Giants, you know, and they were a losing team for 10 years. Wait till next year.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
May I withdraw my motion?
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
No, I second it.
You're withdrawing it?
Yes.
Okay. Makes that easy.
Peter seconded that.
I thought Koochie did. Now, give it to Koochie. Nobody will ever believe it.
He goes down.
I considered.
Any, okay, any discussion on the motion, the main motion? No, I guess what I'll say is, Don, you just scared the crap out of me there. But it was actually a really good, at least it's a good conversation to explore what, you know, but these, I mean, the, these were approved by previous councils, this is nothing new. But I do appreciate, that was some good understanding for me right there, so thank you. There's an example of a good conversation, and we move forward, but I'm going to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I think what you said made a ton of sense, and if we had come to that before and we had a list, I would have definitely been for your amendment.
Note to file.
Well.
Any other discussion? I'm going to get the last word in because you guys take my last word like five times. No, I'm just kidding. All those in favor? All those opposed? I was just teasing it, Counsel. Number eight, non-action items. There's none, I'm sorry, no, item number nine, standing a special committee report and liaison reports, we'll start with Counselor Koochie.
I have nothing to update today.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, two quick things. I wrote it down, on March 23rd at 5:30, the Finance Committee will meet. We're going to work on the TIF policy and start looking at the five-year planning. The Transportation Committee met, and actually, it just really spent a lot of time talking about sidewalks and developers that may be in sort of a place where they, you know, they're obligated to do sidewalks, but there's a sidewalk to nowhere, maybe having some type of impact fee or in lieu fee that they can pay, we talked about that. But what was interesting, which will feed into the conversation we had earlier, they're are proposing to do a Hig- Higgin's Parkway study. They're getting very concerned about the traffic flows on that road because they say there's active interest in almost every single one of the lots out there now. So they're really worried about, and all, all the turn, all the entrance ways into the businesses are right opposite each other, so they're really worried about turning traffic and what they're going to do. But again, there's more indications that traffic is starting to become an issue as, as we, as we're dealing with growth. So there's, money's available to do an impact study or a traffic study, and they're going to pursue those dollars. And the Department of Transportation will be doing their own studies, but this is for us to get a better feel for what might be going on now.
Just if I could tag on that, the good news is the Higgin's Parkway itself does have adequate right-of-way and pavement width. And so there's opportunities for bucket turn lanes or maybe even a center turn lane. So we're in a much better situation there because of that runway section. But I'm pleased to look and get that now.
Senior Advisory Committee meeting was canceled, and I wasn't able to make it to the Pest Management Committee meeting, but their 2019 update to the town council is out. It's on the website. You go to Boards and Committees and go to Pest Management, and it's prominently on their site, so anyone can read that. And Tuesday, we'll be having the next rules and policies, and we're still focused on the charter.
My turn?
Yep, Counselor Caterina.
Long-range planning, for all of you who would like to know what we do, long-range planning.
Fair enough.
Is at 8:00 AM Friday here in Town Hall, and we are looking at the comprehensive plan. And ordinance will be meeting Thursday, the 19th at 4:00 PM, and the only thing on the agenda is what's next in gross, growth management. And I have asked my fellow members of the ordinance committee to give me their thoughts, so I would invite any of you to give your thoughts on what you think needs to happen, not to happen, what you think it even means. Because that's my first question, everyone, it's like, well, what do you think growth is? And I get 18 different answers, so that'd be a good place to start. All right, that's it.
Counselor Johnson?
We had a communications, we had a communications committee meeting this week. I was going to do a write-up today because it was actually quite lengthy meeting, I thought it was a productive meeting. I think you may have received something from Larissa on feeding back into a community poll type survey, so please take your time, give it some thought, we're asking for five questions. We've decided to come up with a, we're going to, we're going to implement a Be Informed campaign, dovetail it into the rollout of our new website. We're still working out the logistics on that, and more to come. Like I said, we'll write up the recap of that meeting and get it to the council, but please fill out the forms on the questions. What, what is it you want to know from the public? If we were to do a survey, community poll survey.
That helps. I was, I was actually a little confused by the directions on that, so, okay, that makes more sense. Do you have, do you know how many new subscribers you guys got for Election Day or an approximate count?
We don't have the numbers yet, we think it's somewhere between 100 and 150.
Oh, good.
Nice, yep, so 10% possibly?
Possibly a 10% rollout. It was, as everybody knows, the polls were very busy.
Yeah, we were up anyway. Larissa, we, since the 1500, I think there'd already been 100 added.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, we're up anyway.
This would be another 150.
It's, it's slow, but good.
Nice, good. Counselor Hamel?
An appointments and negotiations committee, I'd like to offer for the town, the council, first notice, a recommendation to appoint Cheryl LaRue to the Senior Advisory Committee as second alternate with a term to expire in 2021. Also, in our meeting yesterday, we discussed efforts to generate new applicants, and efforts to reach out hasn't really generated much in the way of new applicant flow. We are continuing to study opportunities to potentially consolidate some of the committees that are not required. And finally, we reviewed a survey of town manager compensation with Liam Gallagher. So that was very, very helpful, very productive.
Nice. I'll use my liaison report real quick. The, the consultant for the Community Center report has been received. It was received directly to the ad hoc Community Center Committee's Finance Committee. They have it in their possession, I believe we'll probably be seeing it by the end of this week, if I had to guess, if not sooner, maybe tonight.
It's actually, I believe it's been posted online.
Even better. So we are, there, there's a special meeting, town council meeting, next Wednesday. It will be a two-hour workshop with the presentation from the Community Center Committee. We will not be taking any business, it will just be a two-hour workshop. And we're all, it will also be a public forum, not a public hearing, but a public forum, so members of the public are invited to come, and they will actually be able to ask us questions. And I haven't, I haven't touched base with Matt Tenello, who is the chair of that Community Center Committee, but my hunch is he will be willing to take questions through me, so the questions will come through me, and I'll essentially toss them to him if it makes sense for him to answer them. So again, next week, Tom, before this meeting, agreed to, we'll start publishing that on the Facebook page. I don't know if we have a newsletter going out between then and then, but this, this might be worth a special edition. And we're going to get the report, we're going to get the consultant's report, it's going to be a public forum, no Action Day, us with really no time limit to be able to sit and take this all in.
Is that at 7:00?
That is this, next Wednesday.
At 7:00?
At 7:00. Did we make it at 7:00 or 6:00? I want to make sure, 7:00.
I hope we scheduled that.
I believe it was 6:00.
Yeah, it's actually at 6:00. I'll send out an email, but it's at, it's at 6:00. I apologize. Six, I think it's scheduled 6:00 to 8:00, I'm sure we'd be willing to go long. And I believe we're looking at somewhere between, it's either six or seven Wednesdays in a row that we will either be in session or at workshop, so buckle up.
The one that starts at 5:00, we better.
Just on the note, perhaps it's worth, just, I'll just run down through what the next five Wednesdays look like, just so you're aware of them. And there's some continuity and method to this madness, so as Chairman mentioned, next week will be the Community Center workshop and public forum. The following week, March 18th, we'll do a workshop and receive the Downs update, this is their required annual update. We're going to reserve two hours for that, thinking that there's going to be a lot of information to be shared. Then on March 25th, there'll be a special meeting at which the council would consider the next steps regarding the Community Center, so that we'll be in a position to make some decisions as to the next steps anyhow. April 1st, we are scheduled to have a workshop with, on the library expansion, and then it's a regular meeting to follow. Incidentally, that's the night I present the budget. And then April 8th would be the first reading of the budget. So that's how the next five Wednesdays look. Other quick updates?
Yep, sorry, town manager report?
Just wanted to make sure, we recognize the efforts of Todi and her staff at the polls last night, totally unexpected, this primary, this is the first in 20 years that there's been a statewide primary. One of the challenges that presents, particularly in a town like Scarborough that has over 6,000 unenrolled registered voters, there is the ability for enrolled voters to switch or affiliate even on the day of election. And so in addition to that, there's new voter registration that can occur as well. And so that added a level and a dimension of demand on Todi and her staff yesterday that they typically don't see. Beyond that, you know, we had 7,200 votes cast yesterday, so it really exceeded all expectations. So great credit to Todi and her staff. I guess the final challenge is the Secretary of State's office terribly underestimated the turnout, and we had to print photocopy actually 950 additional ballots, I guess the Democratic ballots.
Wow.
And that, what that means for her is all hand count at the end of the night. So after a long day, then they're asked to do some additional work. So great job, Todi. So, great job, Todi.
Thank you, thank you.
Wow.
Two other quick things, as was mentioned, the Vera Dunn's report is out. I will send a link, or actually, the report directly to you first thing in the morning. I did wanna mention, for the public's benefit, the town has been in a lawsuit with Piper Shores regarding a claim for partial exemption of some of their property for their skilled care, skilled nursing and assisted living portions. We do have a Superior Court ruling that is very much in the town's favor, in term, really, in all counts. I do honestly expect the matter will be appealed to the law court, but nothing has happened at this point. But having a lower court ruling in our favor is always helpful, and at the very least, a validation that our arguments ran true with the Superior Court judge. So with that.
Great, Counselor comments, Counselor Hamel?
Nothing to, to say much, except that, you know, I, Counselor Chairman Johnson's comment about buckling up. You know, we're just really responding to the pace and complexity of issues that, that are in front of us. So, you know, we'll do, do our best, and, you know, it makes me think of the country in Western song, stop the world, I wanna get off, or turn the world around the other way, but it's not gonna happen, so.
Senior Counselor Johnson? That's the only time, I agree, it'll never happen again.
Just share a little, a little tidbit. Yesterday, we had the opportunity in soliciting our subscription increase of the email, got a chance to talk to a lot of constituents.
Make sure your mic's on.
I probably spoke directly to 40 to 60 of them in a five-hour period. Their number-one concern is growth. But that, and I've explained that we're doing a review process through the ordinance, it seemed to be received well. One other little item is, we reestablished the Counselor's Corner on the e-newsletter. It's open to any counselor, I don't really want it to be Ken's corner, although I will consume it anytime there's a lack of interest to do that, so.
Counselor Catarina?
No comments, other than I was at the election yesterday, I worked for a couple of hours at another booth, and I went over and bothered Counselor Clucci a couple times. Yeah, the turnout was great, and I wanna thank people for having such great interest in voting here in the town of Scarborough, so. And thank you to Todi and crew, because I know that's, having done that myself in the past, it's not an easy job, thank you.
Counselor Glesteine?
Yeah, just on what Counselor Ken Johnson said, the, the folks were, who were the most interested in signing up for the newsletter, or, at least on my shift, was the people who are new to town, and they are looking for good information. The, we definitely need to consider getting our technology better. We, it was pretty embarrassing, to some extent. We had two laptop kiosks there where we were going to sign people up, and they just were not functional for having people do that in that particular environment, for, for a few different reasons. But then I had someone else say, well, hey, I like, I don't want an email, I like to get it on-demand, can I get that? And so I'm like, yes, look, there's a button, email newsletter. Well, you know, we, we put an archive out there, and it's back to December. So, I think the, the communication is really huge, new people, young people, they wanna be able to find things. I, I had a long conversation with one gentleman, you know, and he was like, all I wanted to do was find out something when I had to re-register this or something, and, you know, he was like, I couldn't even figure out what department, you know. And this was a very tech, tech savvy guy, and so I said, hey, would you be interested in helping us test the new website? And he said, yes, so I have that name to give to Larissa. So, you know, it was encouraging to talk to people, they were very grateful we were there, they were, they were excited that we were looking at some of these things, and I will just reiterate that, yes, growth, 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 that is what people really wanna know about, they're very concerned about it. And, you know, we've been in a big growth spurt, and, and people are very interested in us taking a very close look at what this all means. And in terms of us feeling out of control, I would just encourage us, we do, we do control our own agenda, and sometimes things do need to slow down. So, I think, you know, that's maybe a topic for discussion amongst ourselves and with members of the public, because that's the number-two thing I hear, slow down.
I guess for some of the seniors at the table, it's past bedtime, so I'll be brief.
I gotta fly out early.
Well, I spent a lot of time at the polls yesterday as well, and we did meet a lot of new people coming through, and it, it's always fascinating to me how many people in town I don't know. And hanging out at the polls on Election Day is always a good way to realize that and meet new people. And I actually felt useful, there was a resident who had their trash can damaged at one of the dumps, and they didn't know how to handle it, and our Public Works Director, he was my point of contact. I asked for guidance, and he explained the process, and she was elated this morning that, that she was gonna be able to get that fixed, so.
Yeah, I guess my two things, one, thank you to Jay, I meant to thank him before he left, but Jay Chase and I, that was, I think Jay does an extraordinary job of presenting things as plainly as possible, so we can all understand it. Todi, if I could make a motion to give you the day off, maybe I can, but I think Tom might get mad at me, I know we're down. We're a little short-staffed this week, but I totally would if I, if I, if we weren't short-staffed. And I just wanted to commend Counselor Johnson on the Counselor's Corner. I think, as, as the guy that started the Counselor's Corner, I really think that this is a good turn and a pivot of the Counselor's Corner, and I can really respect that it's a vehicle to be, to inform people, and it's also holding the readers accountable to, to stay informed and get their neighbors to be informed. So I just, I think it's, I read it, I read it this week, and I, I was, I was proud, it was very nice, so. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?